Good evening, folks. It is Tuesday, July 12th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. And we're in the council chambers of the city of Platteville. And with that, I call the regular meeting of the common council to order. Candace will start with roll call.
Kathy Kopp? Jason Arts?
Here.
Lynn Parrott?
Here.
Todd Casper?
Here.
Barbara Doss?
Here.
Ken Killian?
Here.
Eileen Nichols?
Here.
Okay, tonight, we have a public hearing on a CDBG grant application for Mound View Dairy. So this will be Resolution 22-17. It's about submitting a CDBG grant app. Adam?
Yeah, so I will kick off this one here. So obviously, Ron Brisboy of Grant County Economic Development Corporation approached staff about the potential of submitting a community development block grant program economic development request for proposed expansion of Moundview Dairy, a business located within the city of Platteville Industrial Park. CDBGED grant funds are awarded to local governments to assist businesses to create or retain jobs for individuals with low and moderate incomes. Examples of eligible projects include business loans to expand facilities or purchase equipment, specialized employee training, or business infrastructure projects. In order to apply for funding, a pre-application meeting with the Department of Energy, Housing, and Community Resources is required. The business will work with the unit of general local government to complete the application for the CDBGED program. Typical awards are $7,000 to $10,000 per job created or retained. However, the amount of funds awarded per job is at the discretion of the department. At least 51% of the jobs created or retained must be held by low and moderate income persons. CDBGED applications may be submitted at any time and are reviewed by the department as they are received. And then CDBGED funds are awarded throughout the year until funds are no longer available. So Moundview Dairy has indicated that they are looking to double its capacity by purchasing new equipment and create around 20 jobs. Ron Brisboy has already received approval from the department in regards to an environmental certification letter for the project, in which a copy of the letter and report accompanying are within the staff note. As part of the process of submitting a CDBGED application is the requirement to hold a public hearing in which the following items shall be discussed. Number one, identification of the total potential funds. Number two, eligible CDBG activities. Number three, a presentation of identified community development needs. Number four, identification of any community development needs by the public. Number five, a presentation of activities proposed for the CDBG application, including potential residential displacement. Here, information about the proposed expansion of the Moundview Dairy plant in Platteville Industry Park. And then a citizen input regarding the proposed and other CDBG activities. Ron Brisboy is in attendance, as well as potentially someone from Moundview Dairy to answer questions. So in regards to kind of a budget or fiscal impact, so the intention of Moundview Dairy at this time is to apply for a CDBGED grant forgiveness loan. The anticipation is that this will be a limited impact on the overall budget for the city of Platteville and require assistance from department staff and working with Ron Brisboy of Grant County Economic Development Corporation on the fiscal reporting. The grant request is suspected to be around $210,000, with the total project cost being over $1 million, mostly for equipment acquisition. There is the potential, in the event Moundview Dairy would default on the grant or loan requirements, that the city of Platteville would then be asked to support the project financially or repay the Department of Administration. So within our 2022 City of Platteville goals are the efforts to continually recruit new businesses and increase the number of job potentials for current and future residents. So this grant loan opportunity is a step towards reaching that endeavor. Therefore, staff would recommend authorizing the city manager to work with Ron Brisboy of Grant County Economic Development on the submission of a CDBGED application and would authorize the council to approve the CDBG authorizing submission resolution. So I will now kind of turn it over to Ron, as I know we kind of have to go through each individual step in order to make sure we are satisfying the requirements. We'll go from there.
Okay, Ron, you can come to the podium. Introduce yourself, give your address, that kind of thing.
I am Ron Brisboy. I'm the Executive Director of Grant County Economic Development Corporation. Thank you for that introduction. And Adam did a very good overview. Usually I don't get that type of, you know, preliminary information. So Adam actually covered quite a bit about this. And the city of Platteville itself has a very strong history in CDBG projects. You know, we're doing such things as the CDBG close. I'm administering that for the library, excuse me, the museum project, re roofing the museum. But essence, the, this program, the federal government gives awards about 40 or so million dollars a year to the Wisconsin Department of Administration to disperse these funds out for eligible activities. Obviously, Adam talked about the LMI, in this case with Moundview Dairy hiring the CDBG. If they were to receive that, they would receive funds leveraged based upon full-time job creation, up to $10,000 per full-time job. Statutory language actually says up to $35,000. The business may try to apply for that, but from my meetings and conversations with DOA, most likely would be between $7,500 to $10,000 per job. As stated, the position, the funds, the program allows up to a million dollar grant with a dollar-for-dollar match. And it is a forgivable loan, as Adam indicated. If a company does not create the jobs, there will be no loan forgiveness. And the standpoint of the low and moderate income, the, you do need to hit 51%. We will have to do surveys of the people being hired. And I've talked to Moundview Dairy about this in detail and even given them samples of what the, the survey will look like to assure that this, so they're aware of the, the program requirements. Eligible CDBG activities around here, obviously, in this city. We commonly look at housing. Obviously, I talked about the roofing project, but there's things such as slum and blight removal, our elimination benefits to low and moderate income. Housing that falls into those categories, things such as that are eligible, common eligible activities, as well as business lending. Community needs, obviously, I've worked with the community on such matters. And as Joe Carroll and his team have done very well at identifying what needs are in, and your comp plans address that as well. And as I said, the city has had a strong history of working and developing, utilizing CDBG. Just going through some of the things on the checklist. The, to give specific details on this program right now. Well, first of all, I know one of the activities was, will there be displacement of residential? There will be no displacement. This project will be contained wholly on the Moundview Dairy property. No, no displacement to residential households or to businesses. So none whatsoever. And so the other things on, that I'm going to go over is just the, the details of the program. They're going, looking, as Adam indicated, doubling their expansion of their, or the production capacity of the plant. Representative is here from the company that I've worked with on this application and this process. And I've been working on this for close to two years now, as they would move forward with the, the planned growth. And mostly, as Adam indicated, equipment. We have done the environmental review. It is categorically exempt or excluded. So that aspect is totally completed. And I will work with the, the city on this. The biggest challenge within this program usually is tracking of low and moderate income, the employment numbers. We have to track, in this case, there's 21 people, I think, currently employed at the facility. We have to track the retainage, the retention of those 21 positions, as well as the creation. I know that we were indicating 21. Some of the initial numbers are also indicated, it may be a little bit less than that, but we still have to finalize those numbers as we move forward. And the grant application will be in the range of what Adam had indicated. So that, I guess, is really in the overview of what, I'm going to look at one of my other little checklist here. Make sure we're all right. But the, the funds will be used to purchase equipment. And that's how we, we were able to breeze through the CDBG environment review process. And I guess that's, a developer's agreement will need to be executed between the city and the business to protect the city. I, before coming to Grant County Economic Development, I used to operate or run two CDBG programs for the state of Wisconsin. And that was one thing I always made sure was on my checklist is developer's agreement between the UGLUG, which is the unit of local government, it's UGLUG is the acronym we use, and the business in this case. And I guess if there's any questions, that's really an overview of the program. And if the council or if the business has, if you have any questions, as I said, the business representative this year.
Why don't we have the business representative come to the podium and introduce himself?
Very good.
Thank you. My name is Jake Niffenegger. I'm so-called the plant manager of Moundview Dairy. We've been in business for a good four years. We're just looking to double expansion of the plant. We have a good crew of people that are working there currently. We're 100% staff today, and a lot of businesses can't say that. As Ron mentioned, a thing that we could get up to 21 team members, but I'm going to play it safe and just apply for 15. But I know we'll get up to that 2021 range. Currently, year-to-date, from last year, we increased production already at 21%. With this expansion, I know the, the first six months will be up to another 15%. And hopefully, about another six to eight months after that, we'll be up another 15%. So we have jobs out there for these, these people that are willing to work. I mean, I got a really good crew. Everybody's there every day. They come in with a smile on their face, and they leave with a smile on their face. So it's just...
What kind of cheese do you make?
It's a Hispanic style.
Okay. Other questions for Mr. Niffenegger? Is that...
Yes, correct. Thank you.
Or for Mr. Brisboy?
Um, either one of you, I heard you say it's, I would probably want to ask you about it, Mr. Brisboy. So one of the stipulations here is that the default would happen on the loan. Well, there's a potential in the event that the default or grant loan, if it's defaulted, that it will fall back on the city.
Correct.
Right. Um, how do you see that happen? Like, what, how is that possible? If, and I believe what you're saying is that if you, the company does not create the jobs, then there's a default.
If the, if the, let's say they're projecting, I'll just use 20, 20 jobs. If they, you come within 90% of what you, what is placed in the application, you come within 90% of that target, then you will be considered whole. You've been in full compliance. The, the low and moderate income, if you do not hit the 51%, then you're looking, the business and the city are looking at a full repayment of the dollar amount, is how DOA has historically done this. So that's where you need a solid developer's agreement, an agreement between the, the city and the business, securing those funds, that if things default, or if, if the business falls farther short than the 90%, then that part, they will not get forgiveness. It becomes a low-interest loan to the business. They do not get forgiveness. So job creation is not nearly as focused to me as low and moderate income, create job creation, the 51% threshold. And so, as I said, the LMI threshold is paramount of importance. The, you know, if they fall short on job creation goals, then it could become a low-interest loan. I believe at four, two to four percent, I haven't seen what the state is charging at this time.
And then so what is the plan for retention of these people that you bring in? Like, if they're, the retention plan, I'm just really trying to suck up, so that we don't, in 10 years, we, I don't mind. We'll make it happen, but I'm just, I'm just trying to see if there's like a retention plan. If it's based on you guys creating the jobs and the people, is there any stipulation or any, yeah, in this agreement about retention of these people?
Absolutely, there will be retention. We cannot leverage retention. Sometimes the state will allow you to leverage retention, but the company would have had to issue a statement basically to the press that if we don't get these funds, we will close. And I worked on, I administered a similar project, this grant, in Lafayette County. It was asked by Delta 3 to take it over and administer it, because this one does get a little bit complicated, these ED ones, when we have to track retention and creation. But we will have to track both, and I have a spreadsheet that I've developed that will do just that. But right now, there's 21 employees, more or less, there. We will have to submit payrolls to document, you know, the state, how many people are currently employed there, how many positions exist. But we have to always be able to show at any given time how many jobs are being retained, that those positions still, those positions, because we know we have turnover in, in industry. But we always have to have those 21 workers' positions always there. On top of that, within two years, we have to create the number that we stated in the application, whether that's 15 or 21 as well. So we have to do due diligence on that to track both of those from now till two years, I believe. Well, within two years after the jobs are created.
Okay.
Two questions. What's low to moderate income?
Low and moderate income is 80% of the county's median household income is considered moderate income. I don't have the, the survey in front of me. Usually, Roy, last time I checked, I think the county's median household income is around $58,000, maybe up to $60,000 now. I haven't seen the latest numbers. But you take 80% of that is considered moderate income.
Part-time jobs count also?
They can count, a full-time equivalent can count towards this. So two part-times can mean a full-time.
I also wanted to add that I had the opportunity to drop Milk Off in his factory a couple of years ago, and it was one of the most professional, well-run facilities I'd ever seen. A bunch of local ones.
Other questions?
Other questions?
Kathy? Can you share with us, I know one of the goals for the city is to create paying jobs. Do you have a pay scale of what the new hires?
I do. Well, I did. There. The current idea, the plan right now is, this is what the application, what's been handed to me so far, is one production, 14 packaging workers. I'm trying to see. Oh, production 17 an hour, packaging is 16. Pre-training, I don't believe these are post-training wages. But that's what I'm getting, is 17 and 16, and I will bawl to Jake on defining that if he, if he wants.
Okay, any other questions? Ken?
My question is, what about the location of housing? Is there any requirement as far as how far away you can be located from the plant?
No, there is not, Ken. The, the stipulations of, you know, are you talking respects to where their employees live?
Yes.
No, there is no stipulations to that. If we were dealing with state income tax credits, then we would, could not count people from Illinois that may be commuting in, or Iowa, but not in this, this program does not have such requirements.
They could live in Iowa, they could live in...
They could, they could, under this program, under this, the stipulations of this program. Dress, we cannot, there's a non-piracy clause set down by the federal government on something like this. We cannot displace, if we were going to, in essence, compete or look to displace workers in another state, the feds frown on that for, I guess, obvious reasons. But in this particular program, since it's a federal program, it is not, there is no requirement or no stipulations to that, Ken.
My next question is, are there shift changes that people will be expected to follow? In other words, if they're working night shift, they might have to go to, in a few weeks, day shift. Or can somebody expect that after working nights, they stay nights?
That is true. Right away, once we get up to that 30% range, we're going to have, we're not going to have like first shift, second shift. It's going to be phase the people in and phase the people out. So it's not a so-called two-shift deal. But yes, they will maintain their shift that they're going to be working on unless something comes up, you know, and I'll, we'll ask them, hey, can you work a day shift instead of your night? Because maybe the workload for that particular reason, or whatever.
Thank you.
Other questions? Other questions? Okay, then, I think we're at the point, and this, this public hearing presentation is different, but I think we're at number seven now. Citizen input regarding proposed and other CDBG activities. Is that where we are?
Yes, this would be any opportunity for council members or anyone from the...
So have you, Ron, received any letters or...
No comments so far, no comments, no emails, no any communication to me about this project yet. But anybody in the audience is welcome to ask questions or make comments as well.
Kathy, a real quick question. Has the, and I'm assuming I know the answer, but just to clarify, has Pedic heard this? I mean, they're aware and...
Yes, I met with, I met with Elo, and Elo was still the Pedic director. Elo and I were over there, and I made sure Elo was over in there. Elo was attending, or the Pedic director was attending several meetings, and Adam discussed it at the most recent Pedic meeting.
That's also been going on for two...
It's been about two years, but it's also just to kind of update you, Kathy. It is going to the Water and Sewer Commission tomorrow, just to kind of update them. Because again, one of the possibilities is, you know, with increasing production, that potentially has an impact on the plant. So we just want to make sure, Howard and I have started to have some of those conversations. You know, obviously, this is what we want from businesses, is to grow and expand. But with that, we also have to make sure we're doing our due diligence on the wastewater side.
Okay, so there's no other citizen input. So I think the eighth, eighth bullet point on your agenda is to close the public hearing. So I would be looking for a motion to close the public hearing. So I hear a motion by Kathy.
Okay.
A second by Ken to close the public hearing. Candace will vote.
Kopp?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrott?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and now I would be looking for any motion that a council person might offer in regard to this resolution, authorizing submission of a CDBGED grant for Moundview Dairy.
I'll move to approved resolution, authorizing submission of a community development block grant application for Moundview Dairy and to direct the city manager to work with the Grant County Economic Development Corporation on the fiscal and program reporting.
Okay, I have a motion by Todd, a second by Kathy. Yeah, Kathy and Lynn, actually, to approve. So Candace will vote.
Kopp?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrott?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you, Ron, and Mr. Niffenegger. Okay. Okay. All right, next on our agenda is consideration of the consent agenda. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature of previous discussion. Please indicate to the count, to me, if you prefer separate discussion or action. We have the council minutes from June 28th. Payment of bills, we have the financial report for June. Appointments to boards and commissions, tonight I have four. Sherry Stewart to the Freudenreich Animal Care Trust Fund. Lisa Haas to the Historic Preservation Commission. Kathleen Connet, did I say that right? Connet to the Museum Board, and Will LaSueur to the Police and Fire Commission. There are several licenses in your packet, a Class A combination beer and liquor license for the Quick Trip at 1805 Vision Drive, where Molly Joel will be the agent. A class beer license to Southern Wisconsin Huts LLC. Fort Wayne, Indiana. Elliot Student Dick, agent for premises at 230 Dubuque Road, that is Pizza Hut. Temporary Class B to serve fermented malt beverages to the J.C.'s in Legion Park on Friday, July 29th, from 4 to midnight, for the fourth, for the postponed 4th of July celebration. One- and two-year operator licenses to serve and sell alcohol, as were in your packet. Permits, the run walk permit for Ben's Hope, which will be held Saturday, September 17th, from 8 to noon. The Platteville Community Arboretum Monster Dash, scheduled for Saturday, October 8th, from 9 to noon. We also have firework, the rescheduled fireworks, which are now slated for Friday, July 23rd. I pardon me, July 29th. I should not try to read two things at once. Street closing for Irving Place, North Bonson Street and East Mineral Street, on Saturday, August 27th, for the Third Annual Chalk and Cheese Fest by Path and the Roundtree Gallery. And Main Street from Second to Oak Street on Saturday, September 17th, from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM for the Underground Annual Customer Appreciation Event. And I have someone here who wants to speak about the Underground Annual Customer Appreciation Event. We'll get to that. I'm going to read, Grant County Highway Construction Age would be 2023. So who is here? Mike?
Yes.
Okay. I thought it looked like it would probably be Mike. Yeah. All right, the underground. Okay.
Okay, thanks for having me tonight. First of all, if I stumble on my words, I am a little bit anxious and nervous, so bear with me. So we've been in business here in Platteville since 2014. I was, we opened actually in December that year, so we don't really count 2014. But we've been in business for quite a while. We've done this event before, but the pandemic put everything on hold, as you know. We'd like, we previously had done it in the back of the building, which we totally can do if, if closing the street down isn't an op, is not an option. But we want to set up some tents and do some live glass-blowing demonstrations. And then we have, Brittany is going to do some disc golf, disc dying. She does custom artwork on the discs. We're trying to line up some live art demonstrations that could end up being a, somebody throwing pottery or something like that. We're kind of, we don't have any for-sures yet on a few of the additional ones. Besides that, you're probably familiar with Tristan Ersh, runs Driftmore and does a lot for the community. He's going to be doing the music. Ron Maraga, if you've ever seen the caricatures that are amazing around town, he's one, he's the gentleman that does the caricatures. So he's already confirmed from 3 to 8 o'clock. Fire poi, which is the dancing where you've got fire swinging on a ball. And it's, it's pretty amazing to see, but that is a potential, the one that concerned there, obviously, was the fire, potential fire risk. But I, I mean, we had had it back in the back, but obviously, being on Main Street, this may be more considerations. And we're open to suggestions on that as well. Vendors were hoping to include downtown barbecue. River Bluff CBD out of East Dubuque, and Los Amigos has expressed interest. We did get okays from everybody involved as far as running the event. The charity donation that we do every event, it just seemed to make sense that we do it to Ben's Hope this year. So we're going to run a raffle, and the, the profits from the raffle would go to, as a donation to Ben's Hope. As I understand, that's a 9 o'clock start, and then the run actually starts, or registration, then the event, I believe, starts at 10:30, or the run does. So that obviously is going to kind of, going to conflict with our event. We don't want to do that. We are, we can adjust. And like, if it was a noon to 8 or 9 o'clock or something like that, easy, easy adjustment for us. See here, I was going to put a portable toilet. I only really see the need for one, because we have two bathrooms in the store, so we can use that. But Potosi Portable Toilet is who I've contacted in the past. I'm still waiting for a call back from them. And then we have insured the event before, so I would be looking to insure it for the day for liability and whatnot on the day of the event. Beyond that, we're just looking to basically take it to the next level, raise the event a little bit. And we were thinking about, it's been, it was called the Pyro Picnic, because it's a glass-blowing event. And so we're working with basically blow torches and making glass, much like the pendant on right here, little necklace pendant, and some other artwork. And we're thinking that if that, if that's a problem, we may just have to do it in the back versus on the street. But we use propane and oxygen, so that's something to consider. It's a regular barbecue grill tank and like a welding oxygen tank that you'll see in there, orange, the welders use, and the torches are very similar in BTU that a welder would use. But that is something to consider. Beyond that, I think, you know, we're just thinking we might change the name to Pyro Picnic and Art, and Art Festival. And that's part of the reason why we were looking for like possibly a potter to do some, you know, clay work and things like that, and expand it, and maybe make it more of not just, yes, an underground promotion event, but we also are like, well, let's make it a more of an art community event. But that's still, you know, we've still got some development in the years to come. Hopefully, we can grow it to a big old bash, and everybody wants to come to Platteville, so. But I think that's all I had to, to bring to your attention, and I really hope you'll consider that as an option. And do you have any questions that I can address?
I do have a question. Has this permit application been reviewed by either the fire department and/or the police department?
We looked at it on behalf of the PD and pushed it back, actually, from an 8:00 AM start time to 10:00, so there wouldn't be the conflict, hopefully, with Ben's Hope. So there wouldn't be the conflict hopefully with Ben's Hope. And my understanding is that they're going off a little earlier.
Are they? Okay, I was
Not, not because of this, but I mean, you guys were flexible and we pushed you back to 10:00.
Okay.
Originally from the eight, but I mean, that was to avoid the conflict.
Okay, yeah.
Hopefully that addresses it, but I made a note on my paper that, and I heard you say you have more flexibility.
Online information.
And so we'll see what we need to do and we'll be in touch.
Okay, all right, excellent.
And Ryan, fire department has not seen this. So are there, I mean, it's, I don't want to put you on the spot and say, are there concerns that you want to voice because that puts him on the spot too.
Yeah, and there'd only be minor ones and he just has to follow the codes for tank storage and chaining them and making them secure and tents have to be fire rated and have to have an extinguisher. But I mean, minor, minor code requirements.
The, the idea would be, Mike, that you would be working with Ryan, our fire chief, and with Doug, our police chief to secure the event, or I guess that's what we call it, secure the event.
That shouldn't be a problem at all. We have a studio on the edge of town and it's inspected by the fire department. So I'm blanking on the inspector's name right now.
Casey.
Casey, yes. Casey's been out there. You know, he gave us some pointers and we changed them around and we're running safe out there. So I think we're on the same page and we'll just make sure that we are in the situation as well.
Okay, and so you're saying you would modify the start time of your event on this application. It says 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Yeah, basically, we, our store is open from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., hence the choosing of those hours. But with Ben's Hope going on, we really don't, especially such a good cause, like we don't want to be any kind of a distraction or anything or hindrance to that event. So like, I think our end goal was like, if we could get a good solid eight hours, wherever in that range that it falls, that would be awesome. But you know, if we're, if he's correct and it is, they are moving Ben's Hope a little bit earlier, perhaps we can, you know, stick with the original hours at 10:00. But you know, I don't know how closing down Main Street works. I've never requested something like this before. So looking for a little guidance, I suppose there as well, as far as the times of the event. But yeah, totally flexible. We're pretty easy to work with.
Okay, any questions for council members? This is a part of the consent agenda, so it's not general that we ask that here, but since Mike is here.
I just want to make a comment. Mike, I'm familiar with your glass blowing. You were in the park for Chamber Art Fair when you did the glass blowing.
Yeah.
It was awesome and it was very contained.
And you want to get a smile out of me easy, say stuff like that. I love my art. It's pretty awesome.
It's, it was very well done.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other?
I'm sitting here like, wow, like we're going to put Platteville on the map if we're going to blow it up.
No, but we're doing it so many other ways. Let's add one more.
Listen, that's my husband's birthday. If we agree to this, I'm just, oh, I can't do that. Anyway, I like that thought. I really do. So you're going to do something for eight hours on Main Street?
Yeah, I think, well, we've had six to 12 glassblowers show up before. I mean, in every event, the first five years we did it, we've had, you know, six on a slow year and then one year we had 12 and we were cramming them in. And you get to meet the artists, see their individual artwork. We encourage them to bring artwork that you can purchase directly from the artist, which is, I mean, that's special. You can buy something special. It's pretty cool. But yeah, it's, it's something that's different and new. And I mean, glass art is a big part of our store, so.
I know we're all mature adults in here out and will be mature adults on 17th, but will the city have to clean up behind you guys? They clean up afterwards. You're going to clean up? No, even when
No, no, we're going to clean it all up. Yep, we are, we've, we, the space that we use in the back is all residents of the building. And if there was any bits of glass that could puncture a tire, anything like that, we would never be able to use it again. And aside from that, like you just don't leave a mess.
Right, I'm excited. I really am excited. Low key, I'm really excited.
Cool, awesome. That's what we want to hear. It's going to be exciting and fun. I think you'll like it.
Yeah.
But yeah, we're not, we're not looking, you know, we're looking for approval. We're not looking for anybody to do the work for us. We will do setup, we will do cleanup. We're typically there, I mean, in years past, when we run till 10 o'clock at the store, behind the store, we've been there till midnight cleaning up because a couple of glassblowers wanted to stay later. We just do what we have to do, but especially with, you know, taking up part of the city and the people that use that street daily, you know, we're going to leave it in the condition we found it or better.
Okay, so Doug, I'm thinking that you'll, that you'll run detours. I mean, because if it's closed from Second to Oak, that's one full block. So anybody coming up the hill is going to have to turn on Oak or
Correct, and we'll have barricades up and whatnot.
Same thing if they're coming down, it'll go up Second Street.
And that's a little bit more problematic because you can only funnel them the one way, but it'll, it'll be a adjustment for people for the duration of that event.
Our review and flexibility is of the utmost importance, so.
Hey, any other questions? Otherwise, this is part of the consent agenda. So do I hear a motion on the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Jason and a second by Kathy to approve the consent agenda. Candace will vote.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols? Motion carries.
And so Mike, that means your permit was approved in that group, not as an individual.
That just dawned on me.
I figured you're sitting there wondering what the heck are these people doing, but that's what
Well, you know, this is fairly new to me. I've attended a few meetings in the past to observe and whatnot. And you know, this, this has been a learning experience and I really appreciate it. And I'm honestly really surprised I didn't stumble over my words more.
Great job.
I really appreciate your time today. Thank you all.
All right, thank you.
We'll be celebrating that birthday. Don't worry about it.
Yeah, I think Lynn's been looking for a birthday cake. Yeah, you might want to have those glass blowers ready, you know, with the candles. Okay, citizens' comments, observations and petitions, if any. The only green sheet I had was from the Underground and Mike. So Kathy, would you like to refresh all of our memories about now the 4th of July being the
Yes, officially, the 4th of July is no longer the 4th of July. We have moved the fireworks activities to Friday, July 29th. The events will happen at Legion Park starting at 6:00. Still working on a couple of details. But the fireworks, the veterans group will be there with concessions, the J.C.'s obviously will have the Beer Garden. And we're hoping for the live music and family connections will be there with the kids zone. So there'll be a lot of activities. So we just appreciate the community's support. It was a tough decision to have to postpone, but I think it was the right decision given how the weather turned out. But Platteville will definitely be the place to be on July 29th.
And maybe also on July 31st. Is there a special event at the airport? Is there?
Yes, there is. The 31st is the Boy Scouts Pancake Breakfast. Thank you, Barb, for switching gears. Yes, so, and we may have some exciting, more exciting news to share at our next meeting about that to some additional activities that we're looking to.
But at least now people can mark their calendar for the weekend of the 29th, 30th and 31st of July. Platteville will be the place to be that weekend, both for the fireworks and at least for the pancake breakfast. Okay, any other council people with announcements? Okay, let's move on to the next agenda item. These are the reports that were in your packet.
Excuse me. We throw two out there quick.
Oops.
Two other things.
Sorry.
Sorry. So one, just want to remind council members and obviously also the public. So at our next council meeting on the 26th, we actually are planning to have a special work session from 4:30 to 6:00, which the interim chancellor, Chancellor Vidovic is going to be here. Kind of enters council as well as the community. There'll also be kind of an opportunity to have a little bit of a back and forth to talk about some of the things that are going on at UW Platteville as well as kind of an update for the community on the entire chancellor process. So that just kind of reminder again, that'll be at 4:30. I'll make sure you guys get reminders in your calendars. But then I'm going to pitch it over to Chief McKinley, just because we did get some feedback from kind of some residents about some concerns and just wanted to have him an opportunity to kind of add on to that.
Thank you, Adam. Adam had mentioned that at least a couple of council members, and I've been contacted via email by a couple of folks about concerns about active shooter, mass casualty preparation, what kind of contingency planning, the police department and other first responders do. Very difficult topic, but it's one that's at the forefront of everybody's minds right now. Preparation and planning are difficult because nobody can pick or predict with any accuracy when or where the next scenario or tragedy will occur. Best strategies, hard potential targets, but you have to do that by balancing safety concerns with our open society that we have. In Platteville, we've developed plans and procedures for active shooter and mass casualty events. We've developed a rescue task force jointly with the fire department to assist with the care and extrication of the injured. We work with Southwest Health to develop plans for mass casualty incidents. We train our officers for active shooter incidents. That has changed, that philosophy has changed since about 1999 with the Columbine shooting as opposed to old school like Todd Casper would know, contain and create a perimeter. Now you go in and address the threat to hopefully end these or bring these situations to close much, much sooner. We work with the school district and UWP on familiarization with the larger buildings. We're going to have to get up to speed with a number of the remodels over at the university because I went to school over there, but a lot of those buildings are now different. Our CRO position, the Community Resource Officer position, has allowed us to place more emphasis on our planning and coordination with the school district, including actor shooter procedures, notification systems and reunification planning. Are we doing enough of the right things? Time will tell. I mean, you plan for the worst and hope for the best of these things. And hopefully, the only time you dust off these plans are when you train for them. But again, do I hold us up as the epitome of perfection in this regard? No, I mean, but are we doing the best that we can and what we feel is appropriate? Time will tell. So, thank you.
I would go back a few, couple, maybe two. I don't know how long ago now, but I have high commendations for our emergency services. The two tornadoes we had almost back to back and some of our flood events. So it does, it does the coordination between your departments and between you and the university and other departments in the county is very much appreciated. Okay, any others? Did I miss anybody else's hand over there waving? Okay. Now we'll go to the board reports. Boards, commission and committee minutes, plan commission, Todd, that would be from July or April 4th. Anything to report?
The plan commission, April 4th, I don't believe I was present, Todd. I think
That would probably be true.
I think the last plan commission we had prior to yesterday was a discussion, if I recall, about housing issues that were brought up and what we could do to grow, grow that city. So sorry, I don't have any more recollection. It's been a couple of months.
Housing Authority Board, Eileen, okay. The water and sewer financial report are in the packet, as is the airport financial report. Report from the task for, from the tide group and department progress reports. Anybody who wants to make comments on any of those? Adam? No?
Nope.
Anybody with questions on any of the department progress reports? Okay, then let's move to the action items on our agenda. The first step, which is Resolution 22-18, requesting city staff to be permitted to serve and sell fermented malt beverages at designated events. So this is Bob and it's the Bob and Adam Show.
That's right.
Who gets to go first?
This came before the council last time in discussion. It is a proposal for the resolution to request that city staff be permitted to serve, sell fermented beverages at designated events. All the recommendation, recommended limitations still apply. Including only to be sold by department employees, only in strict compliance with state and federal law, only in a timeframe from 1:00 to 8:00 p.m. and only during the designated event, only in aluminum cans. No carry-in and purchased malt beverages must be consumed in the park only during designated events approved by the city manager and the Parks and Rec Director. The budget fiscal impact is minimal and it is a recommendation per the PFRC, the Brasky Committee and the Licensing Committee, city staff recommend the city council adopt the resolution for allowing city departments to sell, serve malt beverages during special events in the city of Platteville. The resolution is attached and it is the same as proposed in the original reading.
Any questions of Bob or Adam? Do I hear any proposed action?
I move to approve Resolution 22-18, allowing city departments to sell, serve malt beverages during special designated events within the city of Platteville.
So we have a motion by Eileen, a second by Lynn to approve Resolution 22-18. Candace will vote.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols? Motion carries.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is to amend motion, to amend a motion authorizing the award of contract 2-22 for Cedar Street reconstruction and contract 4-22 for the West Main Street culvert. Nicola?
Thank you. So at the April 12th, 2022 council meeting, the council awarded those two contracts for the Cedar Street reconstruction and West Main Street culvert. And in that awarding and based on staff's recommendation, the council motions included using opera funds to cover amounts in those contracts that were over budget. And so in the staff note there, you see that the actual motions that were made with the first one including reallocating funding at the discretion of staff with options 1A through 1E, and those options were all related to use of opera funds. And then the second motion for the West Main Street culvert was with the over budget amount to come from reallocation of opera funds. So those were the two motions that were made when those contracts were awarded. And those over budget amounts that are referenced were largely related to the water and sewer portion of the contracts. Now, the city is issuing water sewer revenue bonds to cover the budgeted portion of these projects. And staff recommended at the last council meeting, including the overages also in that bond issue rather than using opera funds for those budget overages. So that, you know, in the time that passed between April and the last meeting, it, it seems like an option that would give the city more flexibility with the opera funds would be to use the bond issue to cover that 199,676. And so we talked about that a little bit at the last meeting. We sized the bond to include that 200,000. Although clearly it's still at the council's discretion whether or not this, these motions that are recommended here are acted on by the council in favor. So we did talk to city attorney Bill Cole about the fact that the previous motions that awarded the contracts had indicated that the overages would be covered by opera funds. And he said that the council should approve new motions to amend the motions previously adopted. So what I have here is the recommended language if the council would want to amend those motions. So it would be a motion to amend the motion awarding contract 222 Cedar Street reconstruction to all construction with no alternate bid price of 1,269,93, such that the over budget amount is such that the over budget amount is funded through water sewer revenue bond series twenty-two B. And then the second motion would be similar motion to amend the motion awarding the contract, but such that the over budget amount is funded through water sewer revenue bond series twenty-two B. And so the financial impact of making those motions to amend the motion will be that the water sewer revenue bond will include the one ninety-nine six seventy-six, which is already included in that bond issue size of two million seven hundred and twenty thousand. And also, as usual, the bonds will be special obligations of the city of Platteville payable only out of revenues of the water and sewer system, since these are water sewer revenue bonds. And then it will also preserve the one hundred ninety-nine thousand six hundred and seventy-six dollars of ARPA funds for other purposes. And so city recommends that the council amend the motions as stated in the staff note.
And the, the water sewer revenue bonds don't count against our borrowing limits. Because they're revenue bonds, not general obligation bonds.
That is correct.
Yep.
There, okay. Other questions of Nicola on this? Questions? I think you're looking for two separate motions.
Ah, yes, please. Okay.
I could go with the first one. I move to amend the motion awarding contract two dash twenty-two Cedar Street reconstruction to rural construction with no alternative bids at the bid price of one million two hundred and sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars, such that water sewer over budget amount of one hundred and sixty-two thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars is funded through the WS Revenue Bond Series twenty-two B instead of ARPA funds.
Do I hear a second to that motion? Okay, we have a motion to amend contract two twenty-two, twenty-two, the Cedar Street reconstruction. Candace will vote.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we have a second motion.
I move to amend the motion awarding contract four twenty-two West Main Street culvert to Dane County contracting at the bid price of four hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, such that the water sewer over budget amount of thirty-seven thousand three hundred and thirty-two dollars is funded through water and sewer revenue bond series twenty-two B instead of ARPA.
Okay. Here we have a motion by Eileen, a second by Kathy to amend motion, amend the motion awarding contract four twenty-two for the West Main Street culvert will vote.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols? Motion carries.
Okay, next item for action is short-term financing for the airport hangar project. Nicola?
Thank you. And also I see that Commission Chair Dennis Cooley is with us this evening, so he'll hopefully be able to answer some questions as well if you have any. So just to review the staff note here, in early twenty twenty-one, the Airport Commission approved a plan to build a new hangar using state and federal funding in addition to a local match. At that time, it was anticipated the cost of the project would be mostly paid with FAA entitlement allocations, which are awarded annually to the airport in the amount of approximately one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the ten percent local match would be paid by the airport fund. Because some of that project would be paid with future entitlement allocations, it was thought at that time that the airport would need to finance the project through a three to four-year borrow. And this idea was presented to the council back in March of twenty twenty-one. The project didn't move forward in twenty twenty-one because we were all kind of reeling from COVID at that time and bits received for the project were higher than the commission's target range. And so the commission elected to rebid the project in spring of twenty twenty-two. And during that time in November twenty twenty-one, Congress passed the bipartisan infrastructure law. And the result of that has been various, but one of the results is that B I L funds are now being allocated to qualifying municipal airport projects by the Bureau of Aeronautics in the state of Wisconsin. And the amount of B I L funds allocated to the Platteville Airport has been estimated by the B I, BOA at approximately one hundred and fifty-nine thousand a year for up to five years for qualifying projects. So with the, both the postponement of the project to twenty twenty-two and with the new B I L funds added to the annual entitlement funds, the airport will now have enough local funds and allocated funds from the BOA to pay for the project by twenty twenty-four. However, because some of these funds will not be received before all of the invoices are received for the project, the airport anticipates needing a short-term financing option to cover those invoices in twenty twenty-three. So at the June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two Airport Commission meeting, the commission voted to accept the lowest bid of nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand, which was with TRICOM contingent on council approval of a short-term borrow. So at this point, whether the status of the project is that if the council were to act in favor tonight, then the city would draft a letter to the BOA, BOA confirming that there, the financing has been approved so that the project can move forward. The total project costs, including the engineering, are estimated at one million one hundred and eighty thousand. So the schedule that's attached to the staff note illustrates the anticipated timing of the incoming allocation funds and the outgoing invoice payments. And just to identify that the project is managed by the state of Wisconsin. And so those invoices are actually coming from the state to the city once those invoices from the contractor have been processed by the state. So based on the analysis, staff is recommending approval of a short-term borrow by the airport, not, but I guess it would be by the city on behalf of the airport, not to exceed seven hundred thousand, to be repaid from entitlement and B I L funds by the end of twenty twenty-four. So the impact financially on the city would be that the city of Platteville debt will increase by up to seven hundred thousand. And there is a possibility, we have learned from our debt council, that it may not have to be general obligation debt. There may be an avenue we could pursue, which would make it revenue debt because the state funding, the B I L funds and the entitlement funds would be considered qualifying revenue for a revenue borrow. But we, we would want to look at what's the best instrument that we could use, what would yield the best interest rate and so on. But if it were to be general obligation debt, the city, the city debt levels would be at fifty percent for the statutory borrowing capacity, that's the state limited borrowing, and at eighty, eighty-one percent of the city's internally imposed limit of three and a half percent of equalized value. And the, the airport budget will include the interest expense on the borrow and the airport fund will pay that interest. So the recommendation is that that the council approve a short-term borrow by the airport with the city's backing, not to exceed seven hundred thousand as stated. And then the actual instrument itself would come back to the council for approval before the borrow was actually executed.
Okay, Dennis, do you want to come in case somebody has questions? And introduce yourself and then if you may just have to stand there if there are questions.
Dennis Cooley, live at ten thirty-five Kamala Court here in Platteville and on the, been on the Airport Commission for a while now and served as chair.
Okay, questions about this request for a short-term borrow of either Nicola or of Dennis? My only question is you will bid this out? You will put, you will somehow announce that there's a short-term borrow of seven hundred thousand dollars and
Yeah, we, we were planning
or banks or financial institutions can bid on that?
Yes, we would, we would want, so this is a little bit different than my normal course of business in terms of city borrowing. So we would, we're working with our bond council, who is general borrowing council as well. And, and we would look to them for their advice as to what they think would be the most financially beneficial way to do this borrow and which would allow the flexibility. One of the things we'd like to target is that if the timing was such, like, for example, if the, if the project went forward more quickly than expected. Right now, the steel aspect of the project is delayed because of supply chain issues. If that suddenly we freed up, you know, and we, we needed the funds more quickly because the, the, the flow changed in the timing, then we'd want that flexibility. In the reverse, if maybe the invoices were delayed, but the funding came more quickly, we may have to borrow a lot less. So then we would, it would be preferable if we could have a vehicle where we didn't have to borrow, you know, five hundred thousand if we only needed two hundred thousand, for example. So, so we're, we're, you know, with the council's permission, we'd like to work with the bonds council to figure out what's the best vehicle and then bring that vehicle back to the council.
And if I could, I, I would like to walk the council through how we're going to repay this. Would that be all right? Because Nicola gave kind of the worst case scenario. That's if we needed all seven hundred thousand. So we discussed the one point one eight million dollar project cost. And by the way, this, this report was created by a UW Platteville student, Oliver Barnes, who's our intern at the, at the airport. He's doing a great job. We have active entitlements right now in our, in our, dedicated to the, to the airport, which we need to use or we lose them. Okay, so just realize that money is held by the Bureau of Aeronautics. We have, don't have a project. In a five-year period, we start to lose our entitlements. So four hundred and thirty-two thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars is what we have currently available. That means that we, we are short seven hundred and forty-seven thousand two eighteen. The local match, which is the ten percent that Nicola talked about is a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. We have treasures cash. We, we operate, we're one of only two, possibly a handful of, of general aviation airports in Wisconsin that cert, that work at a profit each year, excess revenue. So we've got a nice balance built up, but we don't want to tap that entire balance as we go forward. So a local match will come out of our treasures cash. So a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars there. So net effect that is six hundred and twenty-nine thousand two, two eighteen is left. We're expected to get our bipartisan infrastructure law payment of one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, which is not something we were counting on two years ago. We're expected to get that in November. We confirmed that last night with our Bureau of Aeronautics representative, Josh Holbrook, who came to our Airport Commission meeting last evening. In two thousand twenty-three, in April, we're expected to get another B I L payment of one fifty-nine, which would bring down what we totally would owe hopefully in April, hopefully, let's give a best case scenario, our three hundred and eleven thousand two eighteen to be repaid, plus a little bit of interest. Then two thousand twenty-three entitlements, we would then contribute those to this as well, a hundred and fifty thousand. Which is a good chance that when we go to Christmas in two, twenty twenty-three, we'll owe around a hundred and sixty-one thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars. Our final B I L payment was supposed to occur in April of twenty twenty-four, which is an amount of a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, which will leave us an entitlement cost of two thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars. So we'll have a hundred and forty-seven thousand plus dollars left in our entitlements. But I, we have two concerns. One, well, first of all, this four hundred almost eighty thousand dollars, it didn't come out of the sky, but, but we, it came at a perfect time for this project. When we rebid it, we actually, the bids came in lower. But everything we've heard from other, I was on the phone with Waipaka the other day for a couple hours. What we're hearing is the project cost is not going down. So it, I mean, this is kind of how it is going forward. Thankfully, we got this excess revenue to use. But again, it, we, it isn't ours to keep forever. Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
Kathy? As a member of the Airport Commission, I can attest to how dedicated the commission members are all activities at the airport. And at some point, I'm anxious to hear a report, a public report from the airport, because every month when we go, it's incredible, the amount of flights that are going in and out of there, the interest in the hangars. And the commission members themselves are extremely passionate and very, very intelligent about the, the whole concept of the so it's a good team and I have all the faith in the world that that project is going to happen.
It, it's meant to keep us in this turn toward a business airport. And we're trying to, you know, we have Hunkamp Kruger, we have Tricor people that are actively going in and out of that airport now. This hangar is a seventy by seventy hangar. It's not a normal one. It's a large hangar. But our goal is to be able to bring in larger aircraft and to be able to bring them through and, and to house them when they're doing business in Platteville as well.
I agree, the airport has made significant strides forward in the last years. It's a, it's kind of a gem that's out there that people just don't even maybe pay attention to. So we are looking for a motion tonight. Ken has a question before we go to a motion.
I have a question about engineering costs. It says here that they are included. When you select an engineering firm, do you go statewide as far as advertising?
We work through the Bureau of Aeronautics. The bureau puts out a request for proposals and it's done that way. We're, we're there, but the bureau is heavily involved in who, who decide, who gets to be the person doing the work.
They actually, they actually bid out the project for, for you to do. So they, they develop the specifications and stuff. So because it's a lot of, it's a lot of money that's coming in through those allocations.
We're very fortunate. I mean, we have Mark Krakowski and you know,
Yeah.
He's working with our students in the senior design project up here. We want to get this project moving. We want to build a, a new FBO in the next five years. And, and Mark has been working with our students. It's a great project coming up here. We had a presentation about a month and a half ago and we are, we've got everything lined up right now. Like you just got, want to make sure you know that, you know, we're all farmers with the haze down and we need to make it here. We got the win, it's, the window is wide open for us.
So for those who don't know what an FBO is, you want to tell us? I mean, I do, but
It's our base of operations for the airport, but we're also looking at making it an educational center. We're, we're working with the Fox Valley Tech right now. Thank you Kathy for your comment about the, we have seventeen people trying to get their pilot's license right now at, at our airport. And we're gonna, we're gonna have hopefully on the thirty-first, we'll have some, a few posters of all the people that went through during COVID. It was a very active airport during COVID.
All right, Ken?
My next question is as far as hangar needs. Have you taken a survey as far as what hangar needs for the next five?
Yeah, we have, well, not the next five or 10 years, but we're full. We, we have put two on a waiting list and two open spots now. And again, the, the new facility we're looking at, we've got a personnel from a significant person from the Dubuque Airport has their, is hanging in their aircraft here now. We think there'll be other people that'll follow that. We, we're this close to, to getting a chartered flight in and out of, out of Platteville, to be able to take your families and go on trips. We're, we're working on that. That's our next move. So as far as the space, we had a gentleman come in from Naples, Florida to our meeting two months ago, who wants to bring a very large airplane here and relocate to our area. So we're constantly looking, but we need, it's not when we build it, they will come. We're marketing it actively, but I think this is a different clientele we're looking to serve. These are people that are flying right through our airport now. I don't like how far you want to get into this, but Doug Duplass is one of our board members, developed a, a tracking software. So we literally know the planes that are flying around Platteville and who could stop. So we're going to start to market to who's flying over us and around us. Cause he knows where they're, they're flying in and out of now and we want to start to collect them here.
And just, just as a side note, E A A will start shortly. Not sure, must be this weekend.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. So there may be planes flying in and out that are unusual.
Well, the cost of jet fuel this year, and we're usually really, really competitive with that, but the jet fuel price is a little high for, for us to compete this year. Ken?
My next question is as far as winter usage. I believe the issue is that you don't have the equipment.
Sure. One of the things we purchased this year was new snow removal equipment. It's state of the art. It's wonderful. But thank you, Ken. We forget, we just purchased a flight simulator. So we're able to give people, if the inclement, weather's inclement on the, on the runways, that they can get part of their training in a qualified flight simulator that will be also opening to the public here shortly. So.
Issues for winter using?
Not that I'm aware of. We've got Andy, Andy Lang, our, our airport manager is very active about cleaning runways. So, I mean, they have any airport person around can get in contact with them. I'm not aware of, of any problems here that were any different than anywhere else. So. Have you heard something that I don't know, Ken? Have you heard something that I don't know, Ken?
Black, what I suppose you heard.
Well, you're going to hear from me. We don't have a problem. So there you go.
Okay. Any other questions? Otherwise I'm seeking a motion.
I move to approve a short term borrow by the airport not to exceed seven hundred thousand dollars to be repaid from entitlement and B I L funds by the end of twenty twenty four.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve, uh, short term borrow for the airport. Uh, we'll vote Candace. Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
It's beyond joy.
Thank you.
Pancakes are beyond me.
Okay, uh, pancakes on you. Is that what you said? Okay. Next item on our agenda is the fire department mobile radio upgrade C I P project bid. Ryan.
Got it. So it's, it's part of the twenty twenty two capital improvement plan. Uh, the fire department was budgeted fifty thousand dollars towards upgrading our mobile radios. Uh, which are the physical ones installed in the apparatus. Uh, the current radios that we are using are end of life by the manufacturer, which means that they will no longer service those. Uh, radios and they're also what they call non P twenty five digital. So that limits us to. Upgrade our radios to the digital service like what the police department and EMS service, uh, currently are using. Um, so also in twenty twenty one, um, I'm sure you're aware, Grant County announced that they were moving forward with. Upgrading and expanding the county's radio system, which we, we do also use. Um, to include eleven new and upgraded radio tower sites and installing, uh, new radio. Technology, uh, on those sites as well with it. So our current radios are, are not a hundred percent compatible with that new radio system that they're putting in. Um, which limits our ability to be fully interoperable with other, uh, county agencies. Um, so through the bid process that we created, um, the specifications were to meet both. Platteville's radio needs as well as the county's, uh, system to ensure that, uh, we would be fully ready to. Uh, support onto either one of those systems. Um, the, like I said earlier, the police department and self with health EMS. Are already on P twenty five digital. Uh, so our. Trucks, when we respond, uh, currently are not able to talk to their ambulances or to. Um, like the police department on their digital mode unless they were to switch over to a different channel, knowing that we needed to talk to them. Um, so that limits our, uh, ability to speak with them. So we received big bids back from four vendors, um. For those, uh, mobile radios and the bids would include, um, to, uh, upgrade all of our mobile radios that we currently have. The vendors that submitted were ICOM, um, Raycom, General Communications and Baycom. Uh, we have worked with Raycom, uh, who's based out of Dubuque, General Communications out of Madison. Um, and Baycom out of the Green Bay area on various equipment, um, in the past. And they have all been satisfactory in the equipment and services that they've provided. Uh, we have never dealt with ICOM, um, which is. Uh, typically more known as a. Um, ham radio kinda, um. Vendor, uh, they're based out of like California, uh, so they're not a local unit to us. Uh, so we have never used them and, and are not. Familiar with them, even though they did come in at slightly lower than the others, um, for the equipment. So. But due to the requirement that the vendor must be able to provide, um, service for our radios that we purchase. Uh, as we know, those radios are a, a very critical part of our operations. And if we have a radio go down on a truck. You know, we need to be able to get it fixed in a, in a short matter of time, or that vehicle becomes, uh, unusable until that is, uh, repaired. So we can't. Have a, a vehicle down for several weeks waiting to get a radio sent to California or whatever and replaced or repaired and so forth. So. Um, so with that said, um, the C I P budget is for fifty thousand dollars. The bids range from thirty nine thousand. Twenty six dollars to eighty two thousand, four seventy six, um, oh eight. Uh, there are some additional, um, warranty and services options that are available. Um, if we had available funds, uh, once we get all the equipment in and, and get it installed. Um, which as of right now, um, we're looking at the Raycom bid, which is slightly below that fifty thousand dollars. But it, it, if we have that room at the end of the installation, um, we are requesting, um, the approval up to the fifty thousand dollars. So that we could invest that extra money to give us additional warranty coverage, um, on those to eliminate any, um, costs that could be associated. Um, we're not anticipating, uh, obviously issues with the radios, but they're electronic and, and anything can happen with them. So. Um, the, the radios that we bid were for a three year warranty is included and. Um, it is eight hundred and eighty dollars per radio. To extend an additional two years, um, from the vendor. So there's an, it's about seventeen hundred some dollars. So there's. Potential that we could get that extra coverage, um, with the funds that are available. Once we, um, see what's remaining after we, they were purchased and installed. So. The bid is for, just for the equipment itself does not do, uh, cover installation. Uh, we are planning to install everything in-house ourselves. Um, a lot of the structure in the vehicles are already there. So it's, it's minimum requirements and we feel we can handle that task ourselves and save the. The cost of, of hiring someone to come in and install them. So, uh, we're recommending a warning the bid. Uh, F D O one dash twenty two to Raycom, um, at a price, uh, not to exceed the fifty thousand dollars. Uh, the fire department recommends a warning in the bid as we feel that they are. Uh, as they are the lowest bidder that has the equipment that meets our specifications as well as the ability to service and support that equipment that we're looking at. Um, the bid will allow us to replace all twenty two mobile radios that we currently have. Um, and Raycom also, um, does have service contracts to support equipment, uh, after that five year time, which is a potential that we could. Look at doing that, um, as we move forward, um, down the road. So Raycom is also the vendor that. Is currently designing and installing the new county radio system and they recently did perform. Um, service on the city's radio, um, system, our, our antennas and our repeaters, uh, to address some issues that we were having. Um, and, um. They also recently installed the repeater upgrade for public works, um, to get them from what they call the simplex system to a repeater system. Which gave, uh, increased range for the, uh, snow plows and public works and water and sewer and parks to be able to communicate better throughout the, across the city. So.
Okay. Anybody with any questions? Comments?
Couple of questions. Um. Ryan, is there any value to the old radios?
There's a little bit. Um, right now they're about a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars for a good functional radio. Uh, we feel that they would still be compatible with like the streets departments. Uh, water departments system. So we feel it would be better to use them as a backup and replacement for their. At two hundred dollars, they can't replace a radio for two hundred dollars if they have one go on or need a one replaced in a truck. So we feel that they would be a. A better fit to be repurposed within the city.
So repurposing the current radios because their value is about two hundred dollars. Do, do I read this right? That twenty two radio, that the value of each of the twenty two radios is around two thousand dollars?
Uh, per radio.
Per radio.
Rough, roughly. Yeah.
Question, how, um, if this is approved, how soon do you get to have those radios?
That is. Undetermined yet. With supply chain. What, we will hope it'll be relatively soon.
Okay.
Um, but by warning this, if I call them tomorrow, the bid is valid through like Thursday for the initial bid. So hopefully we can lock in the pricing and get them coming. And then. Yeah, we're at the mercy of the manufacturers, but I, I would hope by the end of the year we'd have it in.
Any other questions? And do I hear a motion?
To move to approve bid, F D zero one dash twenty two, Platteville Fire Department Mobile Radio. Replacement to Raycom at a price not to exceed fifty thousand dollars.
Hey, we have a motion by Todd, a second by Lynn to approve bid F D zero one dash twenty two. Uh, Candace will vote. Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, the next, uh, action item on our agenda, uh, belongs to Nicola again, I believe. It's the. Proposed twenty twenty three budget timeline.
It's the most exciting meeting I've had in about a year.
Yeah.
So, uh, each year we bring forward to the council a proposed budget timeline for the budget process and the C I P process. Um, so that the council can review those dates and, uh, let us know if any of those dates don't look like they will work. Um, hopefully you had a chance to review this from the last meeting and, um, if, uh, if there's any questions, just let me know.
And you would like this, uh, acted on as an agenda item so that it's, um. It is our calendar.
Yeah. And that has been our practice as a, a city to do so. And it's, it's very interesting to see that budgets are, budgets are not created in a day.
No.
It's a six month process.
Never ending fun that we love.
Okay, uh, do I hear questions, comments, or perhaps a motion?
I move to approve the proposed budget timeline for the city of Platteville, twenty twenty three budget and twenty twenty.
Okay, we have a motion by Eileen, a second by Jason to approve the, uh, proposed twenty twenty three budget timeline. And, uh, C I P budget timeline. Uh, Candace will vote. Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries. Well, very good. Now we're going to go ahead and move into the information and discussion items on our agenda. So the first one is the federal award costs allowable ability policy.
Nicola, again me, there's, uh, that's quite a mouthful. Um, and normally things related to a taxi bus would involve Howard. And this does involve Howard, but, um, the reason it's, uh, my item to bring to the council is because it involves. The city's financial management policy. So as you can see from the staff note, in the spring of twenty twenty two this year. Um, the taxi bus transit program underwent a Wisconsin Department of Transportation compliance review. Which is done about every five years. And one of the findings in the review results, uh, dealt with cost allowable ability. And the finding is printed there for you and it states that Wisconsin DOT advises, that's Department of Transportation. Advises the sub recipient to amend his financial management policy to include the following F T A requirement. Procedures for determining the allowable ability of costs in accordance with subpart E. Cost principles of two CFR subsection two hundred and the terms and conditions of the federal award. So the compliance reviewer provided us with the language for the policy that would meet the requirement. Um, to, uh, have a cost allowable ability policy. And so that language is attached. Um, and if the, uh, council were to adopt the policy, then it would become part of our overall. Financial management policy. And so the recommendation from staff is that, uh, the council would adopt. The federal awards cost allowable ability policy. And you can see in the policy itself. That it's essentially, um, making sure that, uh, any costs that are allocated to a federal award. Are appropriate. Um, no unallowable costs are being awarded or assigned to those funds. Um, that the, that the cost is reasonable, that it's, um, correctly allocable by meeting various criteria. Uh, and the last section there is, um, related to fringe benefits. Um, and that, uh, that those are, um, listed and provided for in the city of Platteville's employee handbook, which they are.
Okay, questions?
I just have a question on finding. I was trying to figure out F T A federal what?
Transit Authority.
What is it?
Federal Transit Authority.
Transit?
Yes. It's apartment of, uh, the U S Department of Transportation, it's sub.
Subsection.
Yeah.
So I understand that they have this finding in their review. Did, does this mean that we were out of compliance? Does this mean we misallocated? What does, I mean, certainly language is one thing, but the language finding. Has to relate to something else. So.
Means is.
What is the rest of the story?
What, what it means is that in this particular area, we were out of compliance with. The, with the U S and Wisconsin DOT rules for our taxi bus. Uh, uh, grants that we get every year. So they're saying that in order to come into compliance with those monster CFRs. We need to include this in our policy.
I understand we were out of compliance, but did it cost us money? Did it?
No.
I mean, you know.
New.
Not yet.
Not yet. We.
I mean.
Yeah.
What's, I mean, it's, it's one thing to say, hey, you need this language. Cause you don't have this language, so you're out of compliance, because you don't have language. It's another thing to say, you need this language. And by the way. You, you, the cost you associated weren't reasonable. They weren't allocable. They weren't or whatever. So it wasn't, it wasn't what we did. It was that we didn't.
You're.
Language.
Correct. Yes. And, and basically what they said, if, that, if we do not do.
This language.
This in a timely manner, they could. Restrict our access to the federal and state grants for our taxi and bus system. They didn't say they would, but they said they could.
Are any other questions? I really like their finding. It's so easy to understand. Yeah, so easy to understand. Uh, we'll move on to the next agenda item for information. Which is the award of video camera system R F P.
So within the twenty twenty two city of Platteville operating budget, the common council authorized the allocation of a hundred and forty thousand dollars. For the creation of a citywide camera system. Uh, the allocation was approved to be funded by a hundred thousand dollars of ARPA dollars. And a forty thousand dollar carryover from the twenty twenty one capital improvement plan. Uh, during the month of May, city staff worked on the creation of a video camera system R F P, which was open for submissions from vendors during the month of June. Uh, the request for proposal was advertised on the city website within the Platteville Journal and on the league of Wisconsin municipal R F P website page. Uh, after the deadline date for submissions of Friday, June twenty first, twenty twenty two. The city of Platteville received submissions from the following firms, Telecom Technologies Incorporated, which is headquarters in Eagan, Minnesota. And T C Networks, which is headquartered in Platteville, Wisconsin. Uh, Telecom, provided that they are a certified woman owned business, which has been operating out of Eagan, Minnesota since nineteen ninety two. Uh, they are a Vercata certified provider, which is the cameras that they particularly use. And have been able to deploy some of the most trusted systems out of, out there for their customers. Uh, they have done work in the city of Economlock and Plaque. Uh, T C Networks provided that they have supported technology in southwest Wisconsin for nearly twenty four years. They have built relationships with many local school districts to handle their day to day technologies. Uh, they currently partner with twenty two school districts in a managed service capacity, including the Platteville School District. Uh, T C Networks was sought out by security camera market leaders like. Hanqua and Access to Provide Security Camera Coverage in additional markets, which include municipalities and manufacturers. And they have done work in the city of Dodgeville and Prairie to Shane. As far as the budget and fiscal impact, uh, T C Networks provided a cost breakdown of the following for phase one upgrades. Uh, the total was fifty five thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars and fifty five cents. Uh, this would include about sixteen thousand dollars for software and hardware recorders. Uh, twenty four thousand dollars to be dedicated specifically to the police department upgrades for all of the camera systems that they would need there. And about twelve thousand dollars for city hall upgrades and three thousand dollars for contingency. Uh, T C Networks indicated in their proposal that they will work with city staff on determining the cost breakdown for phase one upgrades that would be made to city intersections. Uh, as well as the Brodsky Center and the inclusive playground. Uh, so they did not officially quote in the R F P as. So they did not officially quote in the RFP as they are recommending, starting with the main locations and then reviewing further for cost reductions. Also, the RFP indicated that their cameras do come with a five-year warranty. Telecom Technologies Incorporated provided four different camera models with yearly licensing options. So they have a couple of different cameras there that have been listed with outdoor and indoor, as well as different kind of warranty options. So to attempt a cost comparison, TC Networks proposed a total of 28 cameras in their phase one costs. In referencing the price and structure above by Telecom Technologies, I estimated the cost of cameras as follows, using an outdoor camera as well as an indoor camera and then including the five-year warranty. So the estimated total came to about $46,532, $532.40. That would be for the cameras and a warranty only. We would have to do some additional research in regards to whether the vendor had the potential additional costs in regards to software and hardware requirements. That is one of the things when the city staff, as well as Platteville ITS looked at it. Out of the two firms, TC Networks definitely did do a better job in actually kind of bringing us the information that we have requested in the RFP, where we noticed with Telecom, it was more of kind of a, kind of a pricing sheet that basically you could kind of choose options that wasn't actually directed towards specific buildings. So again, on Tuesday, July 5th, staff met with members of UW Platteville's Information Technology Services to review the proposed submission for both TC Networks and Telecom Technologies. UW Platteville ITS has had experience working with TC Networks, but it did indicate both companies seem very viable. After reviewing both of the submissions and discussing references of both firms, UW Platteville ITS did agree with city staff to recommend entering into agreement with TC Networks. I have provided attachments within here of each RFP cost breakdown. If a council member would like to see the full RFP submissions, I do have them right here, otherwise they are in my office, so certainly we can set up a time for you to kind of review those. But the recommendation from staff would be to award the video camera system RFP to TC Networks and authorize the city manager to enter into an official agreement with TC Networks in the amount not to exceed $140,000. What do you-
Okay, questions? And TC Networks would do the installation.
Correct.
And that was unclear in the other proposal.
Yes.
Additional questions? It appears nobody wants to talk about video cameras.
That's okay. It'll be back up, obviously, for action at the next meeting, so obviously if any council members do have questions or want to see the proposals, reach out to me and let me know.
I can see a word, city assessor RFP.
All right, so, within the 2022 City of Platteville city goals, is the desire to conduct a request for proposals for a variety of our contracted services, as you've seen, we've been doing that for a couple of months. The City of Platteville currently contracts with Accurate Appraisal LLC for the duties of the city assessor. The assessor is generally responsible for establishing the fair market value of all taxable property in the city, excluding manufacturing, which is assessed by the state. The assessor is certified by the Department of Revenue and is responsible for the assessment process. The assessor is not involved in the determination of tax rates or the collection of property taxes. So the RFP was available for distribution on Wednesday, June 1st, 2022, and placements were made on the City of Platteville website, the League of Wisconsin Municipal Municipalities' website, and twice within the Platteville Journal. We also provide information about the RFP to firms within the state who provide assessor services. The deadline to submit a proposal for consideration was Friday, July 1st, 2022. The City of Platteville did receive one submission for consideration by Accurate Appraisal LLC. So budget and fiscal impact, within the submission proposal for Accurate Appraisal LLC are three service options open for consideration by the common council. Their recommended service option is to do two years of maintenance assessment services in 2023 and 2024, followed by a market reevaluation in 2025. Within the RFP, they provided the definition of what entails maintenance market reevaluation. I won't read those right now, but they're in there for your review. And what they proposed is the exact thing that was done in the previous RFP contract that we had with Accurate Appraisal. So they did two years of essentially maintenance, and then a market reevaluation was this year. So the cost to provide their recommended service option would be $93,000 or $31,000 per year. The last contract for assessment services for 2022 to 2022 was two years of maintenance and then a market reevaluation. The total cost of that contract was $68,400 or $22,800 per year. This would equate to an $8,200 increase in funding needed towards the operation budget each year for 2023 to 2025. So again, due to only receiving one submission for assessor services, the council does have a couple of, has two options. Option one would be to award the RFP to Accurate Appraisal, as their firm did follow the process accordingly, and submitted information by the deadline requested by the City of Platteville. Option two would be to decline to award the RFP to Accurate and repost the RFP to see if additional firms will submit. The concern that staff obviously has with this is this potentially could cause Accurate to withdraw their proposal and consideration would have to be made then, if we're unable to find a firm to do assessor services. City staff doesn't tend to reach out to other firms to try to receive feedback on why additional firms did not submit a proposal. In my experience in other municipalities, though, I do know that this is a common practice is in the past conducting RFP for assess the services, it is not uncommon to only receive a submission from your current assessor, as the amount of work for a new firm to provide services to a new municipality can be extensive. And in a lot of the conferences that Nicole and I both go to, there are pretty much two main firms that are in the state of Wisconsin and literally take the state in half. One is the one that we have, and one is another firm. They pretty much, I hate to say it, they cornered the market. So you either kind of have an option of one or the other, they usually do not co-mingle. So with all the options and considerations in mind about, above, staff would recommend awarding assessor RFP to Accurate Appraisal LLC. So again, that information is in here. This is not up for a vote tonight, so we would like, obviously, council members to take a look at the proposal. If you have any questions, please let myself or Nicole know, and we'll go from there. But otherwise, any questions?
So their contract per year went up significantly. Did their service level go up? I mean, I think one of the things we've talked about is having a person from Accurate Appraisal on site at various times of the year. So is that included in their proposal? Or is that, and then I know there was some pushback about not wanting to do that.
So they did not specifically put that in their proposal. So in their proposal, they, they are going to a system that is more, as was experienced this year, which is much more email and phone call based versus in-person. But that is certainly something that if the council were to award this to Accurate as staff, we could try to make that recommendation actually in the official contract that would have to be signed. So that is certainly something that if, as council members, and I believe the feedback we have definitely heard from Arthur Klaus is that we would encourage that to occur, to have more in-person. We certainly, as staff, would work on having that put into the agreement.
They are here for open book and board of review, but they aren't necessarily here prior.
Right.
And are all the records that they use, I mean, they, they use records we provide, right? No, they create-
They create-
They create their own records. Are the records ours?
Yes.
Yes.
So proprietary, I mean, so the contract states that if, in fact, we went to another firm, we have, these records belong to us.
Absolutely. In the event that, you know, they would retire, or for whatever reason, they no longer would provide services, they are required to give that back to the city.
Okay, folks, there's something to think about for next time. As Adam said, I think that this almost happened the last time where, yeah, you, you basically, yeah, the state is basically split down the middle. Okay. Uh, next item on our agenda is, I did there. Uh, award the audiovisual provider, RFP.
Yes. So this is the last RFP we'll be talking about, I think, tonight. But within the 2022 City of Platteville approved budget was the renovation of technology upgrades to the council chambers, second floor conference room, and human resource office. The City of Platteville has the desire to host and stream, obviously, virtual and in-person council meetings, as well as host and stream in-person virtual trainings and preparations with our citizens and vendors. The purpose of this request for proposals, it was to invite prospective vendors to submit a proposal to supply audio, visual, virtual, and streaming solutions to the City of Platteville. The RFP was made available for distribution on Wednesday, June 1st, 2022, and was added to the Platteville website, League of Wisconsin Municipalities, and issued twice within the Platteville Journal. The deadline for submissions was Thursday, June 24th, 2022. The City of Platteville received submissions from the following firms. Swaget Productions LLC out of Dallas, Texas, AVI SPL out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin, Advanced Systems Integration LLC out of Burnsville, Minnesota, and Integral Building Systems out of Madison, Wisconsin. City staff has provided an estimated cost breakdown, per the information received, in an attachment to the staff note. In review, the firm submitted the following cost breakdowns. Integral Building Systems had a cost proposal of $57,148.13. Swaget's proposal was $72,975. AVI SPL was $144,212.44. And Advanced System Integration was $69,186.15. Again, $100,000 was approved by the common council to be utilized from ARPA funding for the audiovisual upgrades. So at this time, city staff over the next two weeks will be analyzing further the budgetary figures presented by the firms and scheduling interviews with the finalists as necessary. I will be reaching out to council members interested in reviewing the submissions, so if you would like to be a part of that process, please let me know. Otherwise, we'll kind of continue moving forward. City staff will also be looking to meet with UW Platteville Information Technology Services in the next two weeks to review the proposals further. The attention would be for city staff to bring a formal recommendation to the council for award authorization at the July 26th meeting, if you would so choose. Otherwise, potentially, an award would be made at the first meeting in August. So obviously, if you would like to see these RFPs, they are quite lengthy, so I definitely can send them to you. I did put them in the package to try to spare you a little bit, but if you would like to see those, please let me know. But otherwise, the intention is for staff in the next two weeks here to work with Platteville ITS and kind of reviewing all of the information, and then reporting back for you at the next meeting what our recommendation would be.
And, and you haven't done interviews with any of these. The only thing you've done is read paper.
The only thing we have done is basically an initial review of the information which has been provided in your packet. So the next steps are basically to kind of start narrowing down some of those reviews to kind of bring you an option, and then either at the next meeting you can approve that, or if you would like additional information or some further information, we can delay.
Okay, anybody questions on the audiovisual for the council chambers, human resource office, and-
Second floor conference room.
I have a question-
Yeah.
-in general. Oh, yes, I see the page with three proposals presented. So now, what you need to do is interpret to us what all these things mean, as far as council seat monitors and video distribution equipment. Eight thousand five hundred, 100, eight thousand one hundred fifty-two dollars. So interpretation what all this means.
Right, so that's the next piece.
It's a little saying on a piece of paper.
Exactly, so that's the next piece of the puzzle. Basically, I did an initial review of all four and provided you as close of a comparison as possible. As you indicated, Ken, the next step is for staff to really dig deep into these, sit down with Platteville, our information technology provider, and go, okay, walk us through why one firm is, you know, 57,000 and another firm is 144. Why, you know, why is there such a, you know, there's some pretty big discrepancies here? So we want to make sure. And then some of the firms also too, were pretty, you know, you can tell, and that'll come further on in the recommendation, but one of the firms, you can tell, did not even visit the city, whereas three of the other ones actually did. They actually came in, they took pictures, they took evidence. So those are all kind of the pieces of the puzzle you're alluding to is, this is the information dump, and now we're going to go behind the scenes and do the due diligence to come with a recommendation that we feel comfortable moving forward with.
Temple, the screen over there, is that going to stay, that thing?
Probably not. So there's options. So that was one of the things we discussed with the firm. So some of the proposals in here are that actually every single council member would have a LCD screen that would be in front of you, that would be compatible with whatever is presenting. Some of it is looking at potential different ways. They could reuse that, or it could be some different system. That's why I think you're seeing some firms quoted that, and some just gave us a very bare-bones picture.
Council is looking this way.
Right.
And then the people in the audience, they look that way. Go to me, something needs-
Got it.
And I think that was our goal here.
It's a plan.
Barb, one, one comment as a hearing impaired person. Just encouraged to make sure that everybody that comes into this room or the conference room or the whatever upgrade, that we can't just assume that everybody can hear.
Yes, so you'll be happy to know in every interview I did, I asked.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Of course, he didn't hear what they said.
No. Correct.
Sorry, I just couldn't. I mean, sometimes we need to smile.
Right.
Okay. So a lot more coming forth on that for July 26th. All right, the next item on our agenda is sidewalk installation exception, 1601 Progressive Parkway. Howard and Joe.
Yeah, I'll, I'll kick it off and I'll pass it off to Joe here. 2019, the zoning ordinance was changed to require sidewalks or bike paths for newer expanded buildings in commercial areas. There is a procedure where a commercial development may request an exception to the installation. The procedure is for them to submit a exception form, and staff presents it to community safe routes committee for input, and to the plan commission for input, and those, those recommendations come to the council for a final decision. And the community safe routes committee, back in, on June 20th, recommends that the developer be allowed a, a delayed sidewalk installation as part of a development agreement, and then I'll turn it over to Joe for the discussion from the plan commission.
So the plan commission discussed this at the meeting last night, and their recommendation is to deny the exception and basically require them to install the sidewalk as part of the project construction.
So-
And what kind of vote was that?
Six to one, I think it was.
So the majority felt that. It should be noted that there are two businesses constructing right now. In addition to this business, Arby's is construction, constructing, they will put in sidewalk, Oak Park Dental is constructing, they are putting in sidewalk. There's already sidewalk at Sherwin-Williams, and there's already sidewalk at McDonald's. So with the installations, over one half the block will be installed, and there's only one lot left to be sold in that section. Anybody with questions on this?
I guess I was the dissenting person from last night. My concern, a business, we try to attract businesses, they come in this year, they plan to build, we get hit with an inflationary period that's quite simply not been around since the very early 80s. To give this business some sort of benefit in terms of financial planning, having this business put, I guess, the sidewalk in at a later date gives them an opportunity to utilize the funds they have right now to complete their construction without the additional costs. So we're taking the eight, 10% inflationary issue and reducing it for a few years until they come in with a sidewalk. Now, I reckon, I recognize the fact that it's much cleaner, much easier, just to say, put it in right now, perhaps the businesses have the money, as some alluded to last night that they would anyway. But I just wanted to explain the direction of my dissent, I guess. As again, I think one of our goals is always to attract business. That's all.
Was the, was this developer at the, on the plan commission meeting too? Via Zoom?
No.
Because they were at the community safer routes meeting, so I didn't know if they also attended the-
All right, any other questions on this? This will come up for action at our next meeting.
The only other thing you could chew on as council members is to think about is, obviously, this property is in TIF number five. So, you know, particularly if you're thinking about requiring sidewalk to be put in, and any additional sidewalk that would need to be done by the city, that would be, as far as we can tell right now, we did a very kind of high-level review today of staff. In the original development agreement that was signed with Platteville Development Corporation, it talks about sidewalks. So there is the potential that because that development agreement was signed before the expenditure period, that sidewalk installation could be covered by the TIF. So that's- So that's just something to think about as we're talking about.
That would be the sidewalk in the one property that had been developed.
Correct.
Every developer that's McDonald's.
Yes.
Sherwin Williams, Arby's and Oak Park, Oak Dental are putting our, our.
Right. So you've got, yeah. So as a council, you have two options, basically. It's set in the agreement that you can special assess. So if you would choose, you could special assess the sidewalk to the current. The new, the property owner.
The other of the pioneer property.
Property. The other option would be to think about as we're starting. As we just did the timeline, we've got CIP coming up and we have the budget. So we as staff could look into further if directed by the council. About potentially including that additional piece of sidewalk in a, either a CIP or within the budget. And see if, you know, one hundred percent it could be covered by TIF.
Right. And then there would only be the one lot.
There'd just be the one.
After we just invested, I can't even imagine how much money it ended costing. From Culvers through East Side Road for a. And, and there are people who walk through all the time. So. All right. So that'll be on our next agenda sidewalk installation exception. Next is deed owned. Deed city owned land at two seventy five Lily Street, seven fifty Valley Road. And Joe, this is also yours.
Correct. Yeah. So the city owns the property at seven fifty Valley Road. It's the, the water utility property. To the west of that property at two seventy five Lily Street is the Loungier Brothers Construction Property. Basically where those two properties meet is land where the railroad used to go through the city many years ago. So if you've ever looked at those old railroad property maps, they're not very clear. There's not a lot of dimensions and meets and bounds descriptions, but. The situation now is the Loungier Brothers are shifted to retirement mode. So they're trying to clean up their property and sell it. There's some discrepancy as to the area that they currently occupy. If you look at our, our GIS, GIS map, the county's GIS map. It indicates area where, where that railroad used to go through. It appears that it's identified as city owned property now. But they have their operations going back twenty plus years ago have encroached into that area. And it's identified in, in the maps in your packet. It's about point four four acres. At that time, they tried to work with the railroad to acquire that property over many years and got nowhere. And as I said, that there is indication on public records that it's city property. So basically what they're asking is that the city. Quit claim deed essentially our ownership rights if we have any into that point four four acres to Loungier Brothers. To make it part of their property. If the railroad at any point in the future decides they want to challenge it, I guess that's up to them, but that, that's never going to happen. But it really is land that's not usable by the utility. There's a thirty foot. Grade change between the two flat spots, those properties. So the city really could not access that land from the utility property. You'd have to go through one of. Either the Loungier Brothers property or an adjacent property which would require an easement. As a standalone property, it's really not feasible to use because of its size, shape, no street frontage, et cetera. So. It seems to make the most sense to, you know, do whatever we can to make it a part of Loungier Brothers property. And then it can become. You taxable property moving forward. So. Our recommendation would be to quit claim our ownership rights in that property, whatever they may be to Loungier Brothers. Any questions?
Mr. Lounger, do you want to come to the microphone and introduce yourself?
Tom Lounger, six ten Pioneer Road, Platteville. As Joe says, at one time this was railroad property. Families had this, this ongoing problem for forty five years. When railroad pulled out. First thing slowly remove the rails and there were some ditches and over the years. Load of rock was dumped here and something was dumped there and a little bit leveled out over there and twenty years later, you got a level spot. And then you start pouring a little cement, park the trucks on. And over forty five years, you have a flat area to use for trucks and forms and storage. And. That's how it evolved. Making use of the land that was basically abandoned. And so then evidently. Just falls into no man's land. And so I guess we're asking you for a quick claim deed. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions? There is, for those of you who weren't at the plant commission last night, there is no access to this property off Valley Road. Which is the road below. Basically, the access is through. The land, through the Loungier land. So.
It's very state amendment. And then there's also. Power lines overhead that have an easement basically over the amendment.
So there you go. Okay. Well, thank you for coming. And this will be on our agenda for action at our next meeting.
Next month.
Thank, yep. Our next, no, next meeting, July twenty sixth.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is a planned unit development for three oh five East Side Road. Joe.
Yeah. So Family Advocates is looking to construct a new facility in the city of Platteville. They've identified the property at three oh five East Side Road as a, their preferred location. The, that raised an issue from a zoning standpoint because the facility they'd like to build, it's a thirteen thousand square foot plus building. That'd be basically their offices, but it would also contain a shelter within there. So. From an office standpoint, you know, that's a commercial type of use under our zoning, the shelter would be more like a residential use. So we don't have a lot of options within our zoning ordinance that allows. Commercial and residential, the downtown area, the B three does allow that combination if the residential is on the second floor. Which does not allow a very good use for handicapped accessibility, which is something they, they would like to provide. So they'd like to have that building all on one floor. So. To accommodate that, we're looking at this development proposal as a planned unit development, which gives us a lot more flexibility and. In providing that mixture of uses, but it also gives us the ability to. Look into more details of the project. If there's other areas of concern, we can address those as part of that process. So. As I mentioned, it would be a thirteen thousand plus square foot building. Office and shelter facility, they'd have a fenced in. Outdoor area for the tenants, there'd be parking up front for the office space, parking the rear for the tenants. I think that about covers it, but as a plan you development, like I said, it does give us the ability to look into a, a lot of details, but right now would be the. The general development plan where you're basically approving the, the concept, the use and, and the details that are provided. As part of the second round, the S I P, we can get into more specifics of the project if we'd like to, as far as building materials, colors, landscaping. Whatever you'd like to address, we can talk about as part of that, but. Staff does feel that it's a good proposal for that location. And the plant commission did review this also last night and also recommended approval. Any questions?
Yeah. Can you verify is this property within TID six?
Correct. Yes.
And so how does this property, which will become not for profit and not pay tax affect TID six?
Take that one. Good question. So as it stands right now, that property is not owned by the city. So that actually is owned by another property owner. So right now it is on the tax roll. Currently, it is either depending on how they have that set up, I'd have to dig into it. It's probably zone, it's probably agricultural right now. So I don't know, you know, what their taxes are on it is probably limited because there's nothing on the site. So. From that standpoint, it's not generating, you know, robust revenue as it currently stands. But the question comes to if it was a company that obviously is a profit organization. That's a completely different matter. The issue obviously we have with TIF number six is that is one of our financially concerned TIF districts. So as you all know, as we've talked about, I think when Nicola did the report, she did a great job kind of explaining that there has been a six year extension. Done on that TIF district. The main reason that was done was twofold. One is because of the technical college. Exception that was granted. So in about two thousand, between two thousand eleven and two thousand thirteen. The state legislature actually made some changes in regards to the tax rate for. Technical colleges. And so what that did is a lot of TIFs, including ours. Caused any financial scenario that you were using to estimate the amount of taxes that potentially were coming from technical colleges was now reduced. So that potentially caused some TIF districts to now go into distress because the money that. The taxes that you were supposed to be getting was no longer there. So what they allowed is for municipalities to request a three year extension in those TIFs. Because of that, to try to recoup some of that lost tax revenue. Then you also have a three year extension that you can apply for if you do feel that there's an issue with your TIF district. That potentially could cause more tax dollars to have to be raised by residents to cover any. You know, problems you're having with deals or, you know, essentially being able to fund the TIF. So what happened with last year was the TIF was extended for six years. So currently, as it currently stands right now. If nothing were to happen in our TIF district until we closed in twenty thirty two. It is projected to close in twenty thirty two with a positive cash balance. So essentially it would recoup all of those expenditures. The difference here in this particular scenario is that by having it become a nonprofit entity, you are not recouping taxes. So there's no additional revenue that you are receiving versus if it were a company that were coming in, that were putting something in there. You know, potentially that is tax value that would be added to the TIF district. And what that would mean is potentially then instead of closing in twenty thirty two. You possibly would be able to close earlier because you're recouping, you know, additional. Now, there are some projects that are occurring in TIF six that are helping. Obviously, QuickTrip is a good example. That was one that is going to add some value to the TIF. So we are anticipating to see that. There always is the potential that something could go in there. So what that means for the council is you have a couple of options, obviously, to consider with any plan unit development is you can put conditions on there. One of them would be for the city to enter into it a development agreement with family advocates in regards to what would be a payment in lieu of taxes. What was brought forward, obviously, at the plant commission meeting, family advocates is obviously here. So I'm sure they'll echo this, but. With being a nonprofit, there obviously is a concern about being able to raise additional funding for a payment in lieu of taxes. But as a council, you have a couple of scenarios you can consider. One is obviously you cannot require them to have anything. What that would mean is essentially you're giving this particular property over. You could look at potentially some type of a payment that would only be required through the life of the TIF. And then when the TIF closes, potentially then they would no longer be required to make that payment. Or potentially you could require, as we have done with other sources, that the payment in lieu of taxes stands. Those are obviously all things that we can kind of consider. But obviously those would have to be discussions that we would want to have with family advocates because at the same point in time, the service they're providing. We want to be very cautious that we are not hindering their operation because they are providing a service to the community. You know, some of the concerns that came up in the meeting is obviously there are not a lot of three acre parcels that particularly they're looking for that are available. They would be looking to take their current facility that is located on Court Street and possibly putting that back onto the tax roll. So that is something to consider. But obviously there's a lot of, you know, conversations and things that you need to think about as a council because they do have financial implications. You know, we do feel that the TIF district will be able to recover. But we also want to make sure that we're doing everything possible to try to make that TIF district as financially feasible and successful as possible. So. Lot of things to consider with this.
What happens if the TIF district goes in the red?
Essentially, if the TIF district goes in the red, at by the time it would close, which would be twenty thirty two. That then has to be covered by the city. So what happens now is essentially all of the taxing jurisdiction says the city, the technical college, the. School district as well as Grant County are all pooling their money into that TIF district. So instead of, you know, as. Anybody who's not in a TIF district, your property taxes go to all of those entities. All that tax money is currently going into the TIF. In the event that they go into.
And it's being, it's going into the TIF. What, what's it doing in the TIF?
Essentially, it's being utilized. No, it's being utilized for multiple things. So it's either being, it's going towards. You know, in developer incentives that were given, it's going to pay off debt that was used to construct roads, to construct projects, et cetera. Advertising, it's going to a lot of our economic development partners, you know, it's, it's, it's in a lot of places. What would happen essentially if we go into the red is that then the city then has to cover that deficit. Until the TIF closes. And then if the TIF closes and we're still at a deficit, it basically falls onto the city, not the other taxing jurisdictions to pay that difference. So then we would essentially have to take out some type of loan to basically cover what we didn't. You know, what was in the red.
Just for clarification, Howard did pull up the property information that tax, taxes paid on that property right now is eighteen dollars and seventy six cents. So it's clearly egg use. So it's not the revenue that we'd lose. You know, from where it's the potential of, if there was a taxable development on that property instead of a non taxable.
And just to, just to clarify what Adam was explaining too. So. As the years go along for TID six, there will be a period of time where. The TID needs temporary funding, if you will, to cover annual deficits. But currently it's projected to close in the black. So. So it's temporary funding. And, and again, this is something that we'll be bringing to the council in the future. For a recommended borrow that can happen in the TID.
That.
But it would be borrowing.
It would be borrowing so that the city did not have to advance funds from the general fund to cover those deficits on a temporary basis. Ultimately, then the TID is projected to have enough revenue to pay off that debt. And all of its other obligations before it closes and therefore close in the black, which would mean that the city would not have. Any permanent. Deficit to cover. It, it, it was, it's just that we have to find a way to cover it temporarily. There was a time. A few years ago when it was projected to, to, to close in the red. And then the city would be responsible for covering that deficit, that final deficit. But now with, with some development that's taken place there and with increases in, in values of the properties there. It's now looking much better. That's a better picture.
Okay. And so when you say we would have to borrow for the debt, it would be, I'm going to use the analogy of. The airport, it would be like the airport commission borrowing, but in this case the TID would borrow. And then the revenue that was generated through increment in the TID would pay off that debt. Rather than it being. General obligation debt or added to the tax.
That's, that's exactly right. So the, the, the debt that currently exists in the TID. Will be paid off in twenty twenty eight. So that's the current debt in the, in the TID. And, and it, those payments are pretty hefty going from now through twenty twenty eight. But the, the two extensions that Adam talked about, take the life of the TID out to twenty thirty two. So those last four years, there will be projected to be a lot of increment coming in with no. Debt payment and really not much in the way of cost. For those final four years and that will allow the TID to. To repay the city or the temporary borrow that we were just talking about. So you're right. It's, it's just like the, the commission borrow. It will be repaid with these funds that are going to come in in later years.
Okay, other.
Yeah, I guess I had some comments. There was a couple of dissenting votes last.
Yes, there were. And.
Also, so one of the things we've discussed and first and foremost. The domestic abuse shelter and all the services are some of the most wonderful things we have in the community. I'll never take that away from you. You are, you are passionate people. I give you credit. It doesn't appear to be a very. Easy job. If I, if I leave it there. However, however, you're, you're service intensive. Your service intensive for police, for EMS, for schools. For mental health. Tell me, I guess, why the city of Platteville and its taxpayer should pay for the entire bill related to what is a regional service. Regional, even national service. If you start taking a look at the clientele you bring in from all across the country. You know, I'm going to believe that the majority of people in Platteville. Want to give back to the community, but they don't go to work all day to pay to take care of a regional issue. So my. Belief is that there should be some sort of pilot payment. They can seek this money out from some of the other regional aged areas that utilize their services. Again, they have wonderful services. I would not offer a minute to utilize them in the past myself. But I think we need to take a look at and say, why is the city of Platteville paying for a regional service? Why it's a taxpayer? Why is it all in the back of the, the local taxpayer?
So. So ladies, would you like to come to the podium and tell us about your clientele in terms of where they're from and the regional service you provide?
My name is Melissa Pelfry. I'm Assistant Director at Family Advocates. My address is 121 North Lincoln in Cuba City, Wisconsin. Statistically, I ran numbers over the last five years and those that are in shelter, fifty-six percent of the individuals that stay with us are from Iowa, Lafayette and Grand County. And then twenty percent is a reciprocal agreement from the Dubuque shelters and the River View Center who doesn't have. So if they're full, then they'll call us and say, hey, do you have a room that needs help? And then vice versa, we'll call them if we're full. So that's twenty percent. So that's seventy-six percent of the people that stay with us are from this geographic area. The other, what math, twenty-four percent come from maybe one county over, Richland County. You know, Janesville, they could come from Illinois, those referrals from the River View Center. But we also do serve people that are looking to flee from Minnesota that have family back here or have a friendship back here and the abuser and their families and anything that they need to get away from. And we are a domestic violence, sexual assault, child abuse and elder abuse service to the communities. Not only do we provide those services, but to the community at large during COVID, we opened up our food and do twenty-four hour food boxes to anyone in need. We as well have a twenty-four hour agreement with Southwest CAP so that anybody that's homeless can call us twenty-four hours when they're not open. And we put them up in a room in a hotel. So that's another service we provide to the community at large and not just the victims of abuse.
So to also address some of Mr. Casper's concerns, we do receive funding from the other communities, the other counties that we serve. The reason why our shelter has always been in Platteville, number one, people from this area started the agency. It actually started on UWP campus as a call center. And it became a hub here for Platteville because that's where there are more jobs, there's public transportation. There's more, there's more diversity in our school district compared to other smaller towns. So it stayed here in Platteville because it had all of those opportunities for people. I, and again, we do receive funding from the other communities that help to support our shelter. So we get funding from different regions throughout the state, different counties that we serve, that will provide assistance with our electricity, with our heating and cooling with, which I guess would be the same thing. But with food and like all of those things that we get money from them to also support the people that are coming from their communities to be here as a safe location. We also have Dan here. I know Dan had some, did you want to share something?
Additional questions from the council of people. Eileen?
Yeah. I have. When I first read about the application, it seems like a very odd location to me. And so I guess, help me understand why you want to be located in the middle of an industrial park. And, you know, I, I read your, your plan with the fenced in yard and all that.
Yeah.
But I'm thinking, you know, that, that's a very busy street. And there are going to be trucks and possibly factories that are working twenty-four seven. And I just don't see that as a very quiet and a, a place that you would put families. And so I, I'm a little confused about why that location, where else did you look and, and why that location?
Sure. So I can answer all of those questions. We did look at other properties. We looked south of the hospital. There's a twelve acre lot there that the owners are willing to split into two six acre lots. So we did look there. Six acres is a lot of land. The three acres is even going to be a little bit bigger than what we need. We also looked at some property, remind me the other one first, with the hospital itself. And then Dr. Rubel had approached us about some land that he has as well. And so we had four different options on our, on the table. And the main reason we chose this one was because we felt it was better in walking distance to ACC for employment, to Walmart for employment, to the fast food places that are out there for employment. Walking distance with the new sidewalks that are being put in to be able to go grocery shopping, to be able to do the things that they need to do. It's also on the bus, right near the bus route for our clients. And honestly, there's not really large parcels of land in the residential area that would be conducive. The other reason is we also wanted to look like a business. So we want it to be a business so that when people are driving by, they don't look at it and say, oh, that's, that's a shelter. We want people to see us as a business and as a vital part of the community.
Just real quick, we did have a, a meeting with Dan Rorrock with the new development that you all are helping fund the infrastructure for. And they had said because of daycare being put there that they would have to take it back. They were kind of lukewarm on the idea of us building there right next to the hospital.
The other, the proposal that was initially submitted to the Department of Administration did include the land south of the hospital. We had that in our proposal because it was the most expensive piece of land. So we wanted to have a higher amount of grant funding in case that land fell through, we would have something else. But it also requires the water and sewer to be built there or to be put in. And we talked with Howard about that and the cost of that. And again, it's six acres coming off the tax docket and also way more than what we need.
And we did discuss all of these options with Joe and Howard and Adam before submitting the grant. We discussed all four of those options with them.
I think.
Okay, Kathy?
Questions? Actually, one of my questions is the same as Eileen. When I first looked at it, I thought, that's the industrial park. I also think, I, I understand that there's limited parcels that would work. But we just approved, you know, for Mount Du Carey to increase their operation. And, and Emmy Roth is there. There's a lot going on. And Eastside Road is becoming a more major thoroughfare because of the hospital. I do have concerns about the implication to the TID and how that may play out. So maybe what, what I would like to see has, has the PADC board discussed this? They have. And do they have a, did they-
I'll take that one as the prez.
Place? I'm just thinking that, that and then it's, it's not officially in the industrial park?
That's correct. So Dan Drossens, I'm currently the president of PADC. No, it's not currently in the industry park. This is part of the original Collin Farm. So the industry park actually is located on the south side and the east side of this location right here. It's been zoned R3, B3, now it's M2. Hopefully being proposed as a, a PUD. But the discussion at PADC was that that this was not going to have a bigger, big impact on the businesses and the businesses surrounding it had been supportive. Skyway Precision was contacted by one of the board members, Aaron Cullen, to talk about that, to make sure that there weren't going to be any issues with that. They didn't feel like, but ultimately from PADC's discussion, there was no formal action on it, but that nobody really had any issues with this going in this location. The industry park, while Mount View and Emmy Roth are there, but there's a very mixed use in the industry park right now. Anywhere from construction businesses to office buildings, I mean incubator, which has a daycare in it. So I don't think that's really a big concern from PADC standpoint.
Was, was there consideration across the street where, where that across the road, where there's another residential property there?
Correct. There's two homes right there right now.
So would that be possible? I mean, sitting next to homes makes more sense than tucked in.
The issue over there is then going to be the infrastructure. So across the street, when you get into the John, the farm, there was a John's property. We're going to have access issues off of Eastside Drive. Currently, the access points to that property is going to be basically right at the intersection of Means Drive. I know there's been concerns about the number of driveways off of Eastside Road. This location has been approved by the Plan Commission previously for a driveway access. When the certified survey map was approved, I think that was like around 2015, 2016, the access was talked about. So really it comes down to, you know, this is an approved lot with access on it versus the other side has to have access control reviewed as well as water and sewer extended into the property. But then you have the, there's concern about this side of the road. The other side of the road has just as much activity. You have the lumberyard there and the potential for the industry park with the Rose Meyer expansion over there. Yes.
It's actually directed to the ladies. So I'd never seen this draw up of this particular facility. And I am on the board before I preface and prefaces. So when I first saw it, to me, it looked stoic. But then I said, because I know who you guys are, that there has to be a reason for this. So if you can give me a, help me visualize what a person who is running to you in danger. Help me visualize, help us visualize what that place, the structure of that place would mean to them. Because I think if you've never ever had this, it wouldn't look like a big prison. What was your vision in doing this, if you don't mind?
So again, we wanted it to make look, make it look like a business. We will obviously be disclosed. Our current location is disclosed. We have signage outside of our building. We wanted it to be conducive so that we would make sure that every room was handicap accessible, which is not currently the case at our shelter that we have right now. And we wanted it to just have easy flow traffic. So it, it looks, you know, very boxy, right? I think that's what you're trying to say and just that, that institutionalized feel as you're saying. The main thing for us is that, again, it's just having that access, having people feel safe, having people feel that they are a community and that we are there to support them. Having living space that's larger and better than what we currently have, having more space to be able to cook meals, having more space to spend time with their children, having an outdoor space that's fenced in that feels safe as well. And again, it was just more for the flow and for, you know, just that the all-around good feeling and somebody being around at all times to be there to support them.
How will the kids get to school? Is the, can we, will the buses be rerouted? Like how?
That's a great question as well. If the caregiver that's in shelter does not have transportation, that is something that we help them with. Currently, our location allows them to be able to walk to the bus stop. However, we do have a large fifteen passenger van that we would be able to transport children to school.
There, even though it looks thick or businesslike on the outside, is something that is conducive for the kids to play or like whether it be something in the back hours, like what, is there anything that we could say, oh, okay, I get it?
Yeah. So the fenced in area will have a playground set up for as well. We will have a large classroom. Right now, we do after-school tutoring and we do a Monday night support group for our youth. And so that room right now, gosh, it's probably from me to the wall away and from the wall here and with. And that's where our children's group is held as well as our after-school tutoring program. So now we'll have a large classroom that will be able to offer them more support. It'll also be a play area, arts and crafts. And in one of the living rooms, there is a section for toy area as well.
Other questions or comments?
I'd just like to add that we, one of our board members, Aaron Cullen, that was mentioned earlier, sent an email to Adam earlier today. And we'd like to invite all of you, if you would be interested to come and take a tour of our current shelter. It can help you to see the need for the larger shelter and kind of open your eyes to what we've been doing for nearly forty years.
And Darlene, I don't, I haven't heard people say, in fact, Todd noted that, I mean, I don't think people have, have opposition to your shelter or think that you don't need it. I think that the question here is the location. And, you know, I, for those who aren't on the Plan Commission, I pointed out last night that the back of this, the eastern part of this lot on the north side is the fill station for Allegiant Oil. That's very close. And while Aaron went to Skyway and said, do you have any problem with our being here? I also know Skyway has plans to expand. So is, the question will become, is the noise and additional activity conducive to what's here? Adam, can you remember when Cummins, when that was developed, that big acre site? How many trucks were they talking about? Semi-trucks, were they talking about taking in and out of their day?
They had estimated it could be, so they had about ten total, I think, a day, and it varied on the time. I think it was the conversation. So, you know, depending, there'd be some in the morning, there'd be some at night, some in the afternoon, just depends.
So, so I, I think that part of this council's responsibility is to look. It's not just what happens today. It's like, we, we have to think about the growth of the city in five years and in ten years and how that might impact, what impact that might, in, in addition to the TID. So anybody else with questions?
Just want to reinforce, like you said, Barb, I think your, your, your cause, your mission is something everybody can, is behind. But the concern is exactly the location. Is it the, I understand it's one that would work. But is there not some, I mean, I, I picture this beautiful place with large trees and green space for kids and more of a residential?
More warm.
There's currently a daycare out there currently. And, and it's mainly because you're using the indoor space. And we utilize or worked with the engineer, make it one level. And so that large of a building, it's hard to place just anywhere. Yes. You, you know, give me a two acre lot right here in town where we're at and we'll build right where we're at. It's just, it's not available. This property sat vacant for fifteen years and, and it's never been developed. It's been owned by five different people. But the, some of the rationale that Lynn had asked for was that we worked closely with the engineering firm and they came in toward our facility and they identified our needs. And, and they drew up the plan for it. And we've modified it six, seven times to make it work. And before this grant was submitted, we identified the four properties we were looking at. And two of them are in the TIF. One is unavailable to us because of, of a daycare going in there. And so another daycare going in on that same road, they're going to have that same traffic there. So I guess we, we just don't have anywhere else to go, but the two, the two properties and they're both in the TID.
Hey folks, this will be on the agenda next time for action. And we'll move to item HR on agenda, the 2022 city goals, second quarter report.
Yeah. So just kind of closing out the night here, just wanted to give you a short update. As you can see, we continue to be very busy as a city and as a staff and as you guys as a council as well. So just going through again, one of the things obviously we've been working on is with the fire department and the fire station. So we have received, you know, the seven million dollars in federal assistance through the omnibus federal legislation. We haven't received the cash yet. We're still waiting for that, but that's all part of the process. But the next step here is obviously as the common council, you authorized the city manager myself to enter into contractual agreement with LendO5 Blue Design to be the architectural firm tasked with creating the new schematic design for the station. We have started that process. We had a kickoff- We had a kickoff meeting here about two weeks ago. Uh, we're currently in the process of trying to schedule tours that are going to occur in the, uh, kind of second or third week here in August. Uh, Chief Simmons and myself are going to start making the rounds now to all of the towns, uh, giving updates again to kind of where everything is at so that we can kind of keep them updated in regards to the financial, uh, potential financial implications. So that's everything going on there. Uh, in regards to, uh, the goal of having a joint tied common council session, we accomplished that on May 10th. Uh, so that was done where we kind of came up with, uh, talking about the community resource guide, which the, uh, task force hopes to have finalized here in September. Uh, and then they're also working on looking at a couple of additional activities, uh, in relates to LGBTQ, uh, race and disability for the community to consider. Uh, Communication Specialist Richards continues to work, uh, with direct department directors on the creation of videos and marketing opportunities. Um, she's been working on a lot of the banners that you've been seeing, the electronic banners. That's been something she's been doing an awesome job on. Uh, she's also working on updating some of the banners that are on Main Street that unfortunately have gotten a little old and ragged. So we're working on going to be replacing those. Uh, so you'll see that coming up. Uh, city manager intern Swain has been working with Communication Specialist Richards on a budgetary item to include in the 2023 city budget uh, for marketing. So kind of thinking about specifically what could happen there. So that'll be done in quarter three and four. Uh, we have partnered, uh, with the, our economic development partners on kind of a shared campaign. So that was done in March. Uh, and now we're actually working on carrying that out. So that's some of the slogans and new designs, uh, that you'll be seeing coming up here in the next, uh, couple of months and in the next year. And then we're also working with them on, uh, potentially our October 9th event, which right now is kind of a taste of Platteville. We're working on trying to get some vendors. Uh, and then also a possible pickleball tournament. Uh, so we're working on that. Uh, city manager intern Swain has been working with director Flash, uh, and also reached out to UW Platteville about the creation of a historical brochure. Uh, so we are looking to bring that here, uh, finalizing that at the end of 2022 and then starting to disseminate that out, uh, for resources. Uh, Communication Specialist Richards has created new model slogans, uh, for the electronic banners and also utilizing the submissions received from the public. Uh, we're going to be continuing to work on new opportunities and bring forward in quarter three and four, the submissions for Tommyknocker logo, uh, which has been reviewed by the museum and the tide committees. Uh, we are continually ongoing to recruit businesses. As you heard tonight, uh, the potential for Mount View Cheese is one of those to expand. Uh, city staff is in the process of obviously creating multiple RFPs for various service providers. And we hope to have that finalized in quarter two and out for potential bids for all of those. So we'll be continuing that. Uh, we continue to work with private developers on kind of subdivisions, homes, small, smaller lots and common amenities. And, uh, hopefully here in quarter three and four, uh, we'll be able to kind of work on finalizing some of those. Uh, our city manager intern is in the process of finalizing an organizational chart comparison of various municipalities compared to the city of Platteville. Uh, this is in regards to the long-term staffing analysis. Uh, to date, staff has reviewed the museum, fire department, police department, community development and administration departments. In quarter three, we anticipate reviewing the library, parking recreation and department of public works. And then our goal is to bring that forward to you before the budget. So we can start looking at some of the kind of short-term staffing needs, long-term staffing needs, uh, that you can kind of be aware of. Uh, director alone, myself have met with, uh, Platteville School District, available about the referendum plans for a future community center type space. Uh, we continue to meet with YMCA representatives about potential partnerships there that could be for a community center. Uh, city staff plans to start conversations with the Park Forest and Recreation Committee in quarter three about the development of a plan. And we also continue to review the Platteville Armory as a potential, uh, community center location and have some conversations there. Um, our museum continues to work on, uh, collection documentation and develop a list of needed items. Uh, I am in the process of working with key legislative staff members to schedule a meeting in quarter three or four to talk about broadband services. Actually, the governor just announced a new document that I'll be sending to the council that got announced today. Uh, so there's a lot of work going on there. Uh, we're currently in the process of our 2022 CIP projects, which are Cedar, Gridley and Hickory Street. Uh, so we hope to have those finalized in quarter three. Uh, we're also working on our CIP water and sewer projects, which will be starting shortly here with, uh, UW Platteville upgrades as well as the main street covered, uh, culvert and our wastewater treatment plant upgrades. Uh, we're currently finalizing a lot of our park improvement projects with our field shake canopies, rookie fields and Legion parking lot that will be starting soon. Um, our museum is currently working on projects in regards to the preservation plan, energy audit and upgrades. Uh, create city of Platteville long-term camera system. Obviously that just came up. So that's something that we'll be talking here in quarter three and trying to start to implement. Uh, Recreation Corner Bartles has implemented and uploaded a campground site to be, uh, reserved on active net. So now you can go on to online and actively reserve campground sites. Uh, so that is something that has been completed. Uh, work with the inclusion of playground organization. So we actually just had a progress meeting today. We're kind of our kickoff meeting to talk about the schedule. Uh, so that will be starting here either in the last month, uh, last week of July or August, they will be kickstarting all of that construction. Uh, so we hope to have that finalized by the end of 2022. Uh, and then we are currently planning to work in quarter three, uh, working with the DNR on the creation of a potential urban forestry replacement plan for the city. So there you go.
What are you guys doing in your spare time?
Yeah.
Breathe.
Now there's a lot going on. So thank you. Any comments by anybody else? Otherwise I'd be looking for one more motion. So we have a motion by Kathy, a second by Lynn to adjourn. Uh, Candace will vote.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.